Call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, December 16th. We'll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Figurley.
Here.
Meskey.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda from the council? The city administrator has a couple that he wants to add, but in the council, are there any? Administrator Grammets.
Mayor and city council members, item number 18, fairly close to the end of the meeting tonight. Probably should be the last item on the agenda, so I would recommend moving that to right before adjourning. So it would be number 20.
Okay. And then, did you want to ask about the negotiation?
Well, I can do that at this point, too.
Or did you want it as an agenda item, or are you just going to cover it at the end?
I was just going to cover it at the end, but basically, if we wanted to think about it at the end of the meeting, I think the fifth Monday is January, December 30th, and in order to plan for what is going to occur that night, or not occur, as the case may be, we need to know if the council is looking to have a mini-retreat on that particular evening, or if they're going to bypass that because it's in between Christmas and New Year's, and then pick the next one up on the fifth Monday in the future.
And so we'll have that as a discussion item, right above going into executive session. So after the council committee meeting dates are announced. Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the amended agenda discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of December 2nd, Wilmer Municipal Utility Board minutes of December 9th, accounts payable report for November 27th through December 11th, reappointment as members of the Police Commission, Mike Kubisch, Planning Commission, Jeffrey Kimpeling and Cletus Frank, Rice Hospital Board, Peggy Seitzma, John Saunders and Ken Beam, Human Rights Commission, Joe Benson, Hamdi Khosar and Ben Larson, Municipal Utilities Commission, Bruce DeBlique, Zach Maboube and Justin Mattern, Pioneer Land Library Board, Mary Husing, Economic Development Commission Operations Board, Lester Heike, Charter Commission, which these are appointed by the Chief District Judge, would be Richard Engen and Richard Falk, council's acceptance, we have the building inspection report for the month of November, and the Charter Commission minutes of June 11th. Council's information, application for appointment to Municipal Utilities Commission, Cole Erickson, and the City Hall Task Force minutes of August 20th.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
I would like to pull C, accounts payable.
Anybody else? With the exception of item C, the consent items, all in favor of approving those, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. On page 24 of our packet, in the counts receivable, there was about $4,000 in Hanson advertising expenses, and it said that it was for promotional items, and I was just curious if that was something that we give to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Wilmer promotional items, or perhaps was that things that we passed out at the holidays parade?
Mr. Grammets, or I'm not aware of what it is, or Mr. Olkins?
I'm not finding it on the...
Hanson Advertising on page 24.
There it is. It's listed as general supplies.
No.
Mr. Olkins, do you have?
That was for the Main Street program under, through the Planning and Development Services Office, based on the coding that was on that sheet.
Okay, I wasn't sure what the, who the, it was all one coding, so I thought it was, I figured it was to just one entity, but, and I saw that was, one of them was for the table covering for the Main Street, but, so that's why I thought maybe it was for the holidays. I just thought, if people wanted to know, that was part of what was spent to hand out things at the holidays parade, but it's something else? Or something we do at conventions?
Yeah, actually, the third item down is Main Street emblem, so...
Then I will make a motion to pass C, accounts payable.
Motion made in second to approve consent item C, accounts payable report for November 27th through December 11th. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have open forum, and on the agenda, we have four individuals who would like to address the council this evening. Again, please come to the podium, you'll have a three-minute time frame on that, and our city clerk keeps track of the time, and come to the podium, state your name, and whether you reside within the city of Wilmer or outside of the city of Wilmer. Ms. Heidi Amon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Heidi Jo Amon. I reside in the city of Wilmer. I am here this evening to tell you that I have submitted an application for approval for the Human Rights Commission. I do believe, after seeing the approval of three, that there may be one open seat remaining for the year of 2020, so I just wanted to let you know that I have submitted my application for that. This may be a little bit different standard of doing this, but I believe in a hands-on and face-forward approach to introductions to you and the public that may be watching this evening, versus making a decision and not knowing who the individual is. I'm sure you'd rather see and meet me in person instead of simply approving a piece of paper. Maybe some of you know, but I will inform you, I've been a flight attendant with Delta Airlines for 29 years. I've had extensive training in safety and security, cultural diversity, human trafficking training. I have a business degree in business administration, marketing, management and economics from Marshall University, or Marshall State, I guess it's Southwest Minnesota State or something now. I have been with the Fortress Men's Ministry from its inception, seven years ago, having recently just resigned my board position on the Executive Board last Thursday, was my last meeting with that. I've also been involved with several church councils. First Covenant Church, I was on the board, as well as I was deacon of the Outreach Evangelism and Missions Commission, and at Calvary Lutheran, I was on the Worship Commission there. I've also been involved in several voluntary positions and productions at the Barn Theater in Wilmer and the New London Little Theater. So at this time, I guess we all have, I believe I submitted my application on Friday, I believe, to the mayor, but then I did make copies for each and every one of you for consideration, so I would greatly appreciate that you look over my application, and I would appreciate your support and approval, and I thank you and wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ben Larson. Please state if you reside within the city or outside of the city.
Ben Larson, I live in Wilmer. Give me one second here, let me get my keyboard off here. Heidi forgot to add on that she runs a local Muslim hate group, so I think that should also go on her resume. I'll speak in support of the resolution to continue to accept refugees, but first, a little history lesson. In my free time, I like to research hate groups, and I like to look at the history of hate groups.
And I'm just going to tell you that no attacks on the public or on any public official.
Sure, sounds good. The nativist rhetoric we have heard about this resolution that we're going to hear tonight is nothing new in the United States. For example, the Know Nothing Party from the 1840s and 50s, this was an xenophobic anti-immigration party. This political party attacked Catholic immigrants who were largely German and Irish, they probably roughed up my great-grandpa. This group also opposed Chinese immigration in California in the 1880s. They also had many conspiracy theories, most believed that there was a Romanist plot to tear down civil and religious liberty. They also believed that all Catholic immigrants would be loyal to the Pope over the United States. I'm sure that sounds familiar to nativist conspiracy lines of today. What we have heard, and what we will hear tonight probably from the opposition of this resolution, are modern-day incarnations of the Know Nothings, both ignorant and nativists, both have the fear of other, that other just has changed every decade, but their rhetoric and conspiracy theories have remained. I'm proud that the city and county have largely been able to see through these groups and the rhetoric for what it is, hate-filled nativism. They can dress it up in the cross and the flag all they want, but that's not new either. I'm proud to live in a community that, time and time again over the last few years, has stood up for new residents in this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ms. Anita Flo. Please state whether you reside within the city or outside of the city.
Hello. I am Anita Flo, and I live within the city of Wilmer. And I'd like to expand on that history lesson a little bit. First off, I'd like to say that I really enjoy living in Wilmer, feel we have the best of small towns, no traffic jams or rush hour, and the cosmopolitan, diverse shopping opportunities and restaurants downtown, and I really appreciate the economic contributions of refugees and immigrants in general. But the history lesson is from my personal family history. Some members of my family, the Sablet family, Abraham Sablet, were persecuted in Europe. They had to go from France to two different locations in Germany, to England, before they finally made it to Virginia. And one report says that when they hit Virginia, they were expecting to go to a settled town of Williamsburg, but were sent by the governor to the frontier, and they weren't prepared. Things didn't go well. So they were pretty not, they weren't respected, they got treated rough, I mean, they're just pretty useless refugees. And, you know, I'm not really exciting, but I'm one of those descendants. Now, back in the 1800s, back in the day, some of the Sablets were kind of well-known. One of them was a part-owner in the Rocky Mountain Fur Company. Two of them founded forts, one of them was Fort William, named after himself, William Sablet, then it became Fort Laramie. There's a mountain range named after them, cities, counties, all that kind of stuff. Sure, you guys don't remember all that, those Sablets, but you might remember another one of his descendants, Senator John McCain. He's descended from some pretty worthless refugees that got chased all over the place, until they found refuge here, and I think we should offer that to others, who, they and their descendants may be of great value, we don't know how valuable they may be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Ron Christensen. State whether you reside within the city or outside of the city.
Ron Christensen, I still live in the city. First off, this past weekend, we had a hockey tournament for Squirtz in Wilmer that the Wilmer Hockey Association put on, very successful, and as I was driving home Saturday evening by Robins Island, the cars were out into the highway going in, so I suspect all these neighboring communities that came to the hockey arena went and visited it. They must have had a record there, so hats off to the Wilmer Hockey Association. Second of all, you know, this country that we live in, this state that we live in, this county that we live in, and the city of Wilmer are about as divided as I've ever seen in my lifetime. We don't need any more divisiveness with a resolution, which is on the council's agenda tonight, I believe it's number nine. You know, the left is mad, the right is mad, and we don't need, like I say, another divisive resolution. My suggestion is to table it and leave it there, as it is not required by the country, by the state, by the county or by the city. From what I know, it is recommended by only one entity, and that's the Human Rights Commission. Now, I was on the Human Rights Commission in 1994, when I was elected to the council. We dealt with human rights violations, and that's what the commission is supposed to deal with. At that time, it was Elm Lane Trailer Park we were going through, and there was a lot of Hispanics that had their human rights violated, and we dealt with several of them. But after a few years, there wasn't any, so we disbanded, and it was brought back, I believe, one or two years ago, I'm not sure. That entity, the Human Rights Commission, is supposed to be non-political, folks. Agreed? Non-political. You listened to the last two meetings. It's become so political, and there's several individuals on there that are emitting hatred for other people, especially one county commissioner. We don't need that. I would also volunteer to be on the Human Rights Commission. I think you'll be full if Heidi gets on that commission. But again, my recommendation is to table that resolution. It isn't required by anybody. It's a politically feel-good thing by a small group of people. I don't think anybody in this room is against immigration, or immigrants, or illegal refugees, but we don't need any more division in this city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution consenting to continued initial resettlement of refugees. Ms. Shelley Hughesby.
My name is Shelley Hughesby. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Human Rights Commission for the city of Wilmer. On February 5th, 2018, Resolution Number 1810 was passed declaring the city of Wilmer as a welcoming city. It stated, "Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wilmer City Council, as representative of the city of Wilmer, hereby declare and resolve the city of Wilmer as a welcoming city to all who wish to come and contribute to the public good and future success of the community." On the 26th of September, 2019, the President issued Executive Order 13888 on enhancing state and local involvement in refugee resettlement, a policy that permits state and local government officials, with limited exceptions, to support the resettlement of refugees into their areas. On November 19th, 2019, the city of Wilmer Human Rights Commission met and discussed their support for refugees and is encouraging continued resettlement in Wilmer. Commission unanimously supports a resolution whereby Wilmer consents to the initial resolution of refugees and a copy of this resolution to be transmitted to the U.S. Department of State, Bureau of Population, Refugees and Migration. Caney County has also passed a resolution on December 3rd, 2019. Building on our welcoming city resolution, the Human Rights Commission recommends the city council adopt a resolution consenting to continued initial resettlement in Wilmer, Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, what are your wishes?
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution consenting to continued initial resettlement of refugees in Wilmer, Minnesota. Second.
Motion made in second to approve a resolution consenting to continued initial resettlement of refugees. Councilwoman Nelson.
Thank you. The information that was given to us addressed a meeting that was held on November 19th, where it states the commission unanimously supports that, however, we did not receive the minutes from that meeting, and I'm just wondering if they are available, that it could be shared with us, what the Human Rights Commission's thoughts were in doing this, because I think it was prior to the county's vote.
Council, city administrator Grammets.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I just want to note for the record that these minutes have not been approved, you know, by the Human Rights Commission, but they had been written up, and the motion basically was, after discussion of the draft resolution, the motion was made by Chair Hughesby that the resolution be presented to the city council, subject to jurisdiction. Commissioner Engen seconded the motion, which passed. Now, they may, when they meet again, look at this and say, no, that was unanimous, and we want the minutes to reflect that, but the minute says they currently read, just say the motion passed.
Okay. Councilmember Meskey.
I've thought of this quite a bit. The operative word in the expression of these minutes that have not been approved yet was "subject to jurisdiction." We have talked about this, and everybody who has spoken so far is absolutely correct. We did support it unanimously, but at the time, this thing has to be, it was a time of essence for this thing to be moving through the process. We did not know what entity would have that responsibility. We knew that the state of Minnesota, the governor, would have to vote on it. If the governor did not vote on it, then we knew that the counties would vote on it, but the counties get to vote on it regardless. So we knew that that had to go to the county, but if the county didn't vote, then it would be left as a no vote, and Wilmer was going to chime in, that we wanted it to be a yes vote under the resolution that you're looking at currently. I will tell you that it was very political, I would even, this is my own two cents, we sat down before, and I had a model resolution, and there were some very political things in there that we stripped out, so it would be as apolitical as possible, because what we were looking for was a family-friendly resolution, where we were going to unite families. And so I strongly believe that, as a, the city council should not be making resolutions about refugee resettlement. I believe that's the jurisdiction of the federal government, perhaps state government, but certainly not city government. But if a failure of all three of those entities to actually act, we were prepared to act. I don't know if acting now makes any sense, because once the jurisdiction has been defined, those jurisdictions have chimed in. Now, it would be just supporting those other entities. I will tell you that the ordinance, or not the ordinance, the resolution is before you, I would have brought this myself, had no entities moved this forward, because this is strictly talking about reuniting families. And I shouldn't have to, but I went to the United States State Department to look at refugee numbers, and I looked at, and the federal government set that threshold, 30,000 or 30,000, we had 10. Divided by the number of county jurisdictions, Caney County would get 9.5, which is right on where it was, and now, the federal government did reduce that to 13,000, 18,000, so I think our number would be six. I can proudly tell you that, of all of those that came in 2019, were all reunited with families, which is at the heart of what our resolution was going to be here. I do not know, I know the county did act, I don't know what their wherethes are, but I know what their fors are the same. So I was sitting, I don't know if, just offering up a voice of support of what the county did is adequate, because I don't think voting is something that maybe is within our realm. We're definitely out of that jurisdiction, so, and we haven't seen the minutes yet either, because that was my recollection, and I am but one member that was sitting on there. There is a tape, we can go back and listen to it, but with the minutes not coming forward yet, because I would like to, when we go back to the Human Rights Commission, consult with the rest of the group, because, you know, I'm getting older, my recollection may not be as good as it used to be, but I do recall that we were looking to see what jurisdiction was going to happen, but we were definitely unanimous in supporting this resolution, and like I said, I would have proudly brought this here if it was within the spectrum of what the city council can do. I don't know if that sheds any light on the conversation, but those are my recollections.
And just a matter of process, generally, the minutes don't come to us prior to being approved by the board or commission that looks at them. It's unfortunate, I agree with Councilmember Nelson, that it would have been nice if we would have had those beforehand to review, but our process is to have the commission or board review them, approve them, then they come to us, and that's why you'll see some of our, you know, municipality, I mean, the Old Municipal Utilities Board made in of December 9th, as an example, so. Additional conversations. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. So, just for clarification, super clarification, the county passed their resolution that encompasses Wilmer, so it would be, in a sense, if you want to call it overkill, but, or just say it's in support of their resolution, if we vote or pass on this. Correct?
Yeah. That's my understanding.
Okay.
They are the authorizing jurisdiction, as well as the state of Minnesota, and I think that that's happened at the governor's.
Councilwoman Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just substantively, how do we know whether or not we are or are not supporting the resolution that was passed at the county level, if we don't know the exact contents of the resolution in comparison? Because I know that when the county was, when the issue came before the county, they were, at least according to some commissioners, that they were left with information late or delayed, not much time to review the actual information. So how do we differentiate exactly what we are or are not supporting?
I believe that what you would be supporting if you passed this resolution would be what is presented to you. It would not be contingent on what was presented to the county.
I believe that the bit resolved is the same, and I would imagine some of the wherethes are the same, but I do not know what the content of all the other wherethes were at the county level.
Councilwoman Plowman.
A follow-up question, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're all aware that this is a highly-charged, somewhat divisive issue in our community and across the United States, and that's just a fact. I'm wondering, and I'm just going to ask the hard questions, if nobody else will, I'm wondering why, if not necessary, why our municipality would put ourselves in the position of taking a vote on something, on any type of measure that may not be of any substance if there's an overriding jurisdiction? And therefore, if it is completely symbolic, why our local governance would take part in a simply symbolic move in what I would consider a rather polarized political climate? I'm not quite sure why we would subject ourselves to that. Maybe somebody can help me understand, but for myself, that doesn't quite make sense.
Councilwoman Meskey.
I'd share your sentiment. I actually sent an email to a few folks earlier this week of whether or not we can even pull it off of the agenda for that very reason. And so I have mixed feelings about it, because I absolutely supported this, and it was, and I think the minutes, and I think the motion is absolutely correct. If it was our jurisdiction, I'll reiterate, I was going to bring this myself, because I think it has been stripped of the political-charged pieces around this topic. It focuses solely on family reunification, and I support that now, and I can, I could, if this were to actually, if we go to a vote on it, I'd vote for it. But every comment you just made is the absolute reason to not do it as well, because it's already been done. And so that is the crux of the argument, and I actually supported not having it on here this evening and waiting, because there is no rush, because the entities that needed to make the decision have done so in a timely fashion. If we'd like to extend that piece, I would like that to come after the Human Rights Commission has reevaluated the jurisdiction question, because that was in question at the time. And... And time was of the essence when it first came. So, if it were to be delayed or taken back to the Human Rights Commission so they can reevaluate the question now, with jurisdiction being addressed, perhaps they wouldn't see it necessary either.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. I, I believe it would be symbolic for us to go forward with this proposal now, but we did basically do that in, was it April? When we said that we were a welcoming community. So, I feel that we, that we have done that, and, and that the county now passed, even though we may not know the, the formal wherashes and what fours, but they have moved it forward to make this resettlement for refugees. So, I guess I don't, I don't see any purpose in going forward with a, with a vote on this either.
Additional discussion? I'm sorry. Councilmember Mesky.
Well, given the nature of what it is, I don't want to vote down a resolution that talks about being a welcoming resolution. I would prefer that if the makers of it felt, feel the same sentiment, that we can attempt to remove it at this time, and perhaps take advice of tabling this until a further date. Because if I'm going to be torn, because I, I'm telling you, I believe in heart and soul everything in here, these wherashes, and I can't vote no on them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I, I would agree with Mr. Mesky. It's not the actual substance of what we're talking about that I, that I somewhat take issue with or have difficulty with. It's the fact that I feel like we are being drug into a politically charged and, and polarized issue against our will. And if it's not necessary, I don't understand the need to take part. If, if somebody were to clarify that this is necessary for one reason over another, then my opinion would be completely changed, but like you said, with the substance therein, I, I agree with that also. And, and furthermore, to, to Ms. Osmus's point, the resolution, the welcoming resolution that, that we took, I voted in favor of, and I fully support the language of that as well. Have no problem with it whatsoever. What I don't like the feel of, I don't like the feel of being drug into a political issue. I do not believe that that is our purview as a local municipality unless specifically tasked with that item. And I don't believe we are being specifically tasked with that item. Therefore, I have a difficult time supporting it.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will admit that when I heard that this was going to be on the agenda, I wondered why we were addressing it when this was not a municipal issue. However, it is out there now, and it's been talked about in the, on the radio, in the public. Community members are waiting to hear what we have to say about this, and if we choose to not vote on this matter and let our voice be heard, others will just assume that we have a no vote and we do not support this particular resolution. So, I think for us to walk away from this today leaves people with the wrong impression, or at least it leaves me with an impression of not knowing what my co-council members really feel and what they really think about this. Do I really want to be in this position? No, but you know what? We are. This has been, like I said, there are certain things that, once they're put out, you can't really reel it back in and just pretend it didn't happen. That's just not the way it is. I think we need to address it and, and let our voices be heard.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Wilmer, we have spoken earlier on with our welcoming statement. I think that we've always been a welcoming community, and like Councilmember Schwantes says, this is a decision that has been brought forward. I believe we have to follow through, and that's what we get elected for. So, I think it's on the table, it's something that we have to follow through on, and, and I'm, I'm excited about what Wilmer has to offer in his community and into the nation. We're, we're a leader, and we've got to set the, continue to set the standard. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. It's hard not to agree with the wherashes, and maybe I'm just going to ask for a legal clarification when it gets to be it resolved. This document, they're talking about sending this document to the United States Department of State, and as was indicated, I think the jurisdiction is in question, and so I'm just asking for clarification of, is it necessary to, I mean, we've done, I agree that welcoming statement sets the stage for us, not suggesting we walk away from this, but I'm just curious with what kind of legal things we're talking about in the be it resolved.
Mr. Scott.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Nelson, the whereas clauses, the recitals in this resolution simply provide context. They are not the operative language. The operative language is where it says be it resolved. The be it resolved language is responding to an executive order that President Trump signed earlier this year, and essentially, he set up a, or directed his executive branch to set up an opt-in program for participating in the refugee resettlement program. I have reviewed the executive order. It seems like it's ambiguous about which level of local governments need to act. I understand organizations that deal with this day in and day out and have sought that clarification, and must have received clarification that the county is the local government level that needs to opt in in order for the program to continue operation in that locality. So, that's the best I can tell you, and that's my understanding, that the local government referred to in the executive order would be, in this case, the county.
Additional discussion? I'm sorry, did you get your question answered? Councilmember Nelson. Additional questions? Councilmember Nelson, continue.
Councilmember Mesky is serving on the Human Rights Commission, and I respect his opinion, and had asked him some questions about this before, and, and I'm just curious if we're ready. I don't want to walk away from this, but in light of how the Human Rights Commission did document it in their minutes, I'm wondering if it shouldn't just be sent back to them for review.
Councilmember Mesky.
Councilmember Davis is also on the Human Rights Commission.
Yes.
Again, I believe that the jurisdiction piece that was on there was the part of what was going to happen to this resolution. And with the legal opinion you just got, that that jurisdiction was the county, that answered the question, and in my opinion, we didn't need to address it this evening. However, if we push the issue and we're going to address it, I don't know what their wherashes were, but if they were the ones I originally seen, I would not have probably supported it. I support these wherashes, and if it's what we're talking about here is this, I can support this. I'd prefer not to have to do that, for a procedural reason only.
Additional discussion? All in favor of the res, sorry, all.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Abstaining.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye. Can I comment?
No.
Okay. Aye.
Blaueman.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, and one abstain.
I believe the abstention would uphold in this case. Legal counsel.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm not sure. What's the question?
Right, that's what you're saying, right? A conflict of interest? Or not? Or you just want to abstain?
I'm just abstaining.
Okay, that's fine. Councilmember Osmus, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I was just going to say, if we're, if we're having to vote on the resolution, you know, definitely I'm voting yes to reunify families, and so, that's, that would be the, the support of the yes vote.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, the resolution passes. The resolution to accept the grant and enter an agreement with Epitopee Infrastructure Extension. Mr. Aaron Backman, our EDC Director for the City of Wilmer and Caneywood County.
Mr. Member, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council, tonight I'm going to be talking about a, a grant acceptance, as well as a grant agreement related to the Epitopee Sewer Project. Epitopee produces veterinary vaccines for the agriculture sector. Their parent company, Vaxenova, plans to accelerate Epitopee's growth and is prepared to invest over fifteen million in Wilmer in capital investment and adds seventeen well-paying biotech jobs within Caneywood High County. To do that, they need to have adequate sewer service to the site, which is just outside the city limits. In late October, the EDC received word that the deed commissioner had approved the Innovative Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant with the City of Wilmer. The EDC had submitted a grant application on the city's behalf for the Epitopee Sewer Extension for one point three million dollars. The city attorney, city staff, and EDC have reviewed the grant agreement. The final legal description does not have to be in Exhibit A. You should have, or if not, I have certainly copies of the grant agreement, it's lengthy. The city does have flexibility in adjusting the path of the sewer line, and I just distributed the latest version of the Epitopee's line. And as you can see, it goes south on Forty-Fifth, turns ninety degrees, and goes on the north side of the new Highway Twelve. One difference from the last version that you may have seen is that it is in the MinDOT right-of-way. And we've had various discussions, I would say, the city attorney, Robert Scott, has had a number of discussions with MinDOT, as well as other organizations, and can speak to some of those items. The route is, is important, because obviously, you have to get it in a good progression in terms of how it flows. At this point, the grant is solely for the sanitary sewer. There is not a match on the city side, which is unusual, but that's a positive for the City of Wilmer. The match, in this case, is the corporate investment. With me tonight are two Epitopee's individuals, Brian Harberts, who is the CFO, and Mitch Schuler, who is the manager, plant manager. So, if you have any additional questions for the Epitopee's people or for the attorney, Robert Scott, we would be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Those are made, and secondly, the approved resolution entering into a grant in an agreement with Epitopee for infrastructure extension. Discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate and thank you for all your work on this. It was huge for the city, and like you said, the city did not have to have a match to make this happen. This is going to allow Epitopee to expand, and it's just all-around a win. And I just really want to thank you for all your work and efforts towards this.
Thank you.
Councilman Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, second that, everything Councilwoman Osmus said, and I think it also goes to note, I had a couple of people actually ask me about this, thinking that this is, that this was a piece of infrastructure that would service only one facility. And I, I think we can all proudly say that this is going to service multiple facilities that have been staples, economic staples in Wilmer, and not only that, it's going to help facilitate future development if we're thinking five, ten, fifteen years down the road in terms of economic development to the south of the realigned Highway Twelve. I think it's going to be only a plus for that future development. So, again, great work, and this should lead to even, even better things for development on the west side of Wilmer. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
I'll thank you as well, but I also really want to thank Epitopee for calling Wilmer home. Appreciate it, and this probably assures many, many, many years in the future, and probably some wonderful expansion and ungreat things in the future, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. Just again, so you're aware, the corporate offices for Epitopee are on the Midwest Technology Campus, and what we're talking about is a sanitary sewer line that connects with the production facility, which is on the west side. I would like to add that as part of the innovative grant program, it's for, it's intended for innovative businesses. There are other businesses in the general vicinity that are, I believe, are innovative, and so that's, that's the match that we try to do here. And any, if you have any other questions, I don't know if, 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 Robert, you'd have any additional comments that you would want to make in terms of your discussions with MMB and MinDOT?
Sure, thank you. Mayor, as members of the council, the grant agreement in your packet is a fairly standard agreement the state uses whenever they issue a large grant to cities like this. I reviewed it. The language is to be expected and acceptable. The piece that's still out there is obviously, as Aaron mentioned, determining the exact route of this pipeline. The current thinking from city staff is that it would be ideal for that to be located within the MinDOT new right-of-way for Highway Twelve. I have had conversations with MinDOT, broaching that subject. Whether the entirety of that, that length can be in the right-of-way or not, we don't know yet, but those conversations will continue. And Aaron, Aaron's point about the legal description in this grant agreement, that's not ready to be finalized yet, because we don't have the final location. So, there are still some very fundamental issues with this project to be worked out with the various parties, but at this point, there's no reason the city can't proceed to approve the grant, approve signatures on this grant agreement, understanding that there, there's a little bit of work left to finalize the document.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you. Aaron, when is a target date for this to start to proceed? Do you have an idea?
Well, of course, I would like it yesterday, but in reality, we're talking 2020. Obviously, with the way the weather is right now, we would be fortunate if we can be underway next year. The, the grant, if you'll notice in the grant agreement, speaks to having everything completed by 2022 in terms of the, the projects. But obviously, Epitopee can't make that investment unless they have assurance that they are going to have a city utility to the site. So, I would, I personally would like to see progress made in next year.
So, you're thinking like spring possibly, or, or is it too hard to estimate, or?
Well, hopefully, we can see some progress in second quarter of 2020, but we'll, we'll see where, where we end up.
Okay. Well, to echo everybody else's sentiment, we appreciate your work, Epitopee's participation and, and what they're bringing to the table. We appreciate all that. That's just nothing but good news for us.
Great, thank you.
Additional comments? Also, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question. If there's a bump in the road and there's some change orders, who pays for them then?
Right. So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, we feel that there is a, a sufficient amount in the grant to cover the costs for the project. Bolton and Mink has done the analysis. It's, it's reasonably straightforward in terms of the route. You don't know until you are going through the process if there's any surprises, but in, in talking with the engineers and so forth, I think that there is sufficient funds within the grant to undertake the project. If you're doing eighty dollars, hundred dollars a foot, linear foot, and you're going six thousand four hundred feet, you can kind of do the math as to kind of do the math as to what that might run. And so we've, we've tried to have enough contingencies in there to handle the project. But until you get into it, construction, you don't always know.
Another job well done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank Epitopee for the work that you're doing here in Wilmer. The visionary processes that you were doing, adding new additional jobs, is to be commended. I know you're looking at a $20 million expansion out there within the upcoming years, and that will be a good addition to Wilmer as well. So we thank you for your investment in Wilmer. And to Aaron, we continue to give you accolades, and with projects like these, they will continue. We appreciate that. Counsel, ready to vote? We'll call.
Counselmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elverado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Edi, Zironis.
That resolution passes. I would like to take some mayoral privilege and move item number 14 up to this item. We have two members of the public that are here, and rather than them having to sit through our committee meetings, if it's okay with counsel, I would like to take privilege and move that up. Is there any opposition to that? We'll go ahead and move item number 14 forward. Mr. Baumgartner, our City Park and Rec Director. Resolution to execute a license agreement for use of Robins Island for the holiday light display.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council. Tonight before you is a resolution to accept an agreement that we have with Wilmer Fest to celebrate the lights of the world display at Robins Island. We all know that this is the second year of it. We found out early last week that there was only a one-year lease agreement, and so we've talked to Attorney Robert Scott and with the Wilmer Fest Committee to redraft a new agreement that's going to be a renewing contract with the 30-day notice of dismissal. So also, we are paying for the lights that are out there, and it's roughly about $150 to $175 for electrical use out there.
Counsel, what are your wishes? Move to approve.
Second.
Those are made and seconded to approve a resolution to execute, execute a license agreement for use of Robins Island for holiday light displays. Discussion. I see we have Mr. James Miller. Did you wish to make a comment?
Well, I'll comment, Mayor Calvin, and members of the council, on the not paying our electrical bill. If we receive an invoice, we'll pay it. But we do appreciate the opportunity to be out there. Obviously, this is a light display. Last year, that helped us raise about $92,000. That went back to our, our local Salvation Army to help people in the community. This year, we branched it out to help four area nonprofits, including the Salvation Army, the Candyway County Food Shell, the Link in New London, and Habitat Free Humanity West Central Minnesota, who are helping people with what we consider basic needs within the community. So really doing some good work, and again, we're thankful for the opportunity to be out there and to not only show off the lights, but to show off Robins Island as a huge asset within our community.
Thank you. Counselmember Elverado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Kubisch, Scott Kubisch. He's the electrical wizard that works on those lights and makes magic out there with those, with those lights. So I believe they're P-10 lights out there?
RGB lights.
RGB lights. They're amazing what, what, what they do, and it's his creativity, his drive to make that happen. He's put in countless hours, and thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselmember Mesky.
Since I have you here, a couple of questions. How, how is traffic going out there? If people have any suggestions, I can still recall when it was at its former location, loving to see those movies and things like that. Anything that, getting some ideas and things like that for that display?
Counselmember Mesky, we've had lots of questions about the movies, and, and with the, the construction going on this year, we tabled a lot of that because of that. We, we lost a pretty good section of parking where we were able to host that. We also did not have Santa and Mrs. Claus back this year, simply because of the traffic pattern with the new construction gone there. But we'll, we'll hopefully be able to use the brand-new beautiful shelter next year.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, definitely. We're, we're excited to be able to do that. And, you know, you mentioned traffic. The traffic has been good. We are very blessed, and, and, you know, Gary Manzer and the Public Works Department are absolutely wonderful to help us out to keep, to keep things open. You know, there's always challenges when you have rain and drizzle and, and snow, but we've had very good traffic, and it's just great to see the families. I stood out there Saturday night. It was five degrees below zero. We had a roaring fire and just a great number of cars coming through that, that had a chance to see the lights, and that's the exciting part about it.
I've heard nothing but good things, and, and it's, it's improved, and I suspect every year it will continue to improve. So I mean, people that maybe went last year and think, I went and saw it last year, I would encourage you to go check it out again because it's actually, it's different and it's getting better every year. So thank you.
As long as we have, like Counselmember Elverado mentioned, guys like Scott and Mr. Chad Kuzman back to help out, as well as John Schpin, all the other volunteers that have been out there, and it is a volunteer-driven project to, to put everything up and to come up with some new things to show off and, and new technologies to be able to use, whether all the different acronyms of RGB and LED and whatnot. But again, it's, it's really about just showing off that great asset of our community.
Counselor Osmus, follow away. Counselmember Schwantis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to shout out to also, Chad Kuzman is in the audience, and this, this wasn't even possible without his vision and his generosity, his family's generosity, and we are so indebted to their family, and it is fabulous. And it's, we're just, we are blessed to have this in Wilmer and for them to have donated it to the, to be able to be put out at Robins Island and for the Wilmer Fest Group for taking over. I mean, it is a, it is just a fabulous addition to the city.
Thank you. Counselmember Schwantis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo what has been said. I am wondering, Mr. Miller, if you have enough bell ringers, and if not, how one might go about volunteering to do that.
Mayor Calvin, do I need to pay off the council member for, for throwing that out there for me?
Put it to the Salvation Army.
There you go.
Very good. Members of the council, Counselmember Schwantis, yes, we would love to have some more volunteers. That's always the challenge and always the struggle to get more people to come out and help out. The weather looks absolutely fabulous this week, so if you wanted to help out, this would be a great opportunity. We have, we have signups both on our website and on our Facebook page to come on out and be part of it, and, and we set everything up for you. We get the fire going, and we just ask you to sit out there and, and have fun and welcome people and thank them for coming out.
Counselor Elverado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for not recognizing Mr. Kuzman. I'm sorry. We do appreciate everything you've been doing out there, your, your team, your constantly out there, your energy. Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it. It's, it's a diamond, and people like to come and see that diamond, so thank you very much.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. We'll call.
Counselmember Schwantis.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Elverado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Edi, Zironis.
The resolution passes. Next, we'll go to Public Works Safety Committee report for December 4th. Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works and Safety Committee met December 4th at 5:15 at the City Office Building. Members present were myself, councilmembers Osmus, Nelson, and Elverado. We were joined by our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our Police Chief Felton, Fire Chief Hanson, our Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Manzer, and our Engineering Administrative Assistant, Ms. Del Bosque. We called the meeting to order at 5:20. The first item we discussed were public safety statistics. We always take note of the various statistics year over year. There are ebbs and flows in different areas, but there was nothing atypical of either one of these reports that, that was noted. They are attached to your minutes, so now would be the time, if you have questions for either chief. Hearing none, we will move on to the next item that we discussed, and that would be tow bids. The current City of Wilmer tow contract is set to expire at the end of 2019. Big quote, specifications were advertised and sent to local tow agencies with the due date of November 13th. Two companies bid on a two-year contract, including years 2020 and 2021. The low bid company was Ed's Service Center of Wilmer. The big quote for 2021 was substantially lower than the previous contract, and there's supporting documentation on your minutes here, equating to lower fees paid by the city for tows. Wilmer Police Department handles the administrative portion of towing vehicles, along with management of the city impound lot. The 2018 and 19 administrative fee was $67.23 to $68.21 in addition to the tow fee. If the 2020 and 21 tow contract is approved, Wilmer Police Department would like to adjust the administrative fee to $69.34. So the total fee to be collected, including tax, would be an even, an even $80 per vehicle. The even $80 per vehicle assists staff, as only cash is accepted after hours for tow fees, and officers don't have access to change during that time. The 2018 and 19 tow fee was higher than the 2020 and 2021 bid, and although the administrative fee increases less than $1, we're able to pass along substantial savings to the citizens who have had their vehicles towed. So a motion was made and seconded to accept the 2020 and 2021 tow bid and award that bid to Ed's Service Center of Wilmer, and I will enter that now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a tow bid. Is this a resolution? My computer's not being friendly to me. Is this a resolution or a simple motion?
It said information, but...
Oh, for information only? Oh, okay. I thought there was a motion made and seconded.
Could we ask our city administrator for, or either, yeah, our city administrator for clarification on the action that should be taken here?
Yeah, I believe it's for information only. Given the very small amount of the actual bid, it fell well under what a department head could authorize. So that was, it was processed through, so it was just information to the Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Yeah, we did, we did note that, and we double-checked it and triple-checked it, and probably blinked our eyes and quadruple-checked it to make sure that the numbers were actually correct. And being that as it was, we took it for information but decided to pass it along.
Would the motion and seconded wish to rescind their motions?
I, I would.
Sure.
Motion and second has been rescinded. Counselmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item up for discussion was a Minnesota BCA Joint Powers Agreement Regarding Human Trafficking Investigators Task Force, and this is a... The Wilmer Police Department is charged with the investigation of various crimes, including human trafficking and sexual exploitation of children. The Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, or BCA, rather, has created the Minnesota Human Trafficking Investigators Task Force and is offering affiliate memberships through a joint powers agreement. This agreement would allow local investigators to attend specialized BCA training, the ability to borrow specialized equipment, access to BCA investigator assistance, and some reimbursement of personnel and equipment costs for these types of investigations. The BCA will occasionally request assistance from agencies with joint powers agreements, but it is non-obligatory. The joint powers agreement of this type would potentially allow access to equipment at no or substantially reduced cost that Wilmer Police Department would otherwise have to fund individually. This agreement would also allow some reimbursement for investigations of this type. And a motion was made and seconded to allow application to the BCA Joint Powers Agreement, and I will make that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to, and during resolution for a joint powers agreement with Minnesota BCA. Discussion. We'll call.
Counselmember Davis.
Aye.
Elverado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Laumann.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Edi, Zironis.
The resolution passes. Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next agenda item that we had was regarding ordinance regarding massage parlors local to the City of Wilmer. This is a request for the City of Wilmer to research and potentially implement an ordinance to regulate massage businesses and services to the public. A sample ordinance comprised of elements from the Blaine and Wade Park ordinances are included and should be included here as well. The goal of the massage parlor ordinance would be to protect businesses that are operating legitimate establishments and ensure cleanliness, safety, prevent criminal activity, and ensure the general welfare of the community with regard to this business type. The City of Wilmer recently has had massage businesses that have generated complaints and concerns from the public over articles described above. The Minnesota Legislature has not yet acted on a statewide standard or statute, and no potential timeline is available for those actions. Therefore, the Wilmer Police Department has spoken with various massage therapists and massage therapy educators regarding an ordinance, and there's been support to do so to further protect those legitimate businesses and the therapists who work in them. The request was made that the council direct the Wilmer City Attorney to draft an ordinance for consideration, and we have the sample. A motion was made and seconded for that ordinance to be drafted, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made, has been made and seconded to approve a motion to draft the massage parlor ordinance within the City of Wilmer. Discussion. Counselmember Mesky.
This is just a draft. We are, we will look at the final ordinance at some future date. That's the idea?
That is my understanding. Our legal counsel could confirm that, if he would.
Mayor, members of the council, I understand the ordinance to direct our office to prepare a draft to bring back the council for consideration. I understand the draft or the material in your packet is gathered by staff, which is very helpful, actually, but we'll look at that as examples of what other cities have done and take that into consideration in putting our draft together.
Are there other businesses that are identified as businesses that are in a position where we have to have ordinances to regulate them?
I believe that question would best be directed to our city administrator, who may defer to our police chief.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I agree.
Tag, I meant. I, I know there are ordinances that cover, you know, obviously, the, the sale of alcohol and tobacco and those type of things, even cafes and the theaters. Taxi cab companies require a license and requirements regarding insurance and hours of operation and that type of thing. So I feel that this would generally fall into some of those, or be similar in some of those categories.
Additional comments or questions? I'm sure most people on the council for sure know, but the, the new individual that was hired by Youth for Christ has spent the last two years traveling the country, speaking specifically to this issue. And I had dinner with him last week, and I think it certainly would be something that maybe the police chief could reach out to Sean and talk with him in regards to that. I know there are specific things that we want to address when looking at these, and a lot of city ordinances are not written correctly, and he has a lot of opinions and a lot of expertise, so maybe that might be something that we could run it by him. I think he was going to try going out and looking at the ordinance before tonight, but I'm not sure. Just moving to town, he's been quite busy, so maybe we could reach out to Sean and see if he's got some advice on that, if that's okay with the council. We have a motion on the table for consideration of the draft massage ordinance. All in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item that we had discussed, excuse me, was Robins Island Four Seasons Shelter Change Order Number One. Ram General Contracting was awarded the Robins Island Four Seasons Shelter Construction Project at the August 19th council meeting. Construction began in September for the 3,100 square foot building, including a community room and public restrooms. Change order number one resulted from labor and material for water main pipe and service changes to switch the sizing from 2.5 inches to 4 inches, as well as moving the location of the service due to groundwater infiltration, adding outlets for sink and flush valves, upgrading the steel roof color to copper in order to match it to our new Rice Park shelter, and also adding additional erosion control for the MPCA. The total for these change, the changes and increases, the contract amount by $23,083.27. The base bid, just to let you know the financial impact of it, the base bid with alternates of the polished concrete floor, air conditioning, spray foam insulation was awarded to Ram General Contracting in the amount of $925,152. The addition of change order number one brings the total contract price to $900... The addition of change order number one brings the total contract price to nine-hundred-forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-five dollars twenty-seven cents, and will be funded from the budgeted contingency amount. And we're under the understanding that that project is still within budget, and I will make the motion to approve change order number one now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve change order number one for work at Robins Island Four Seasons Shelter. Discussion. Also, member Schwantes.
Thank you. Part of that change order is to upgrade the roof color to copper. Can someone tell us what color it is now and why we are changing it, other than the information indicated it was to match the roof of the other building?
I would defer to administration or to public works, actually, park and rec, rather.
Minister Grammets, or do you want to...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, as you see in your council packet, there is a listing of all the different change orders, and one of them was a little over two thousand dollars for the increase due to the color. And I've been here, you know, long enough to have heard the request that the roof match an existing park shelter roof for consistency, and obviously, that was not included in the base bid. A color was, but not that color, and so, when that change was made, that actually ended up being an upcharge, because it's not a standard color. And if I'm being correct on that, city engineer or park and rec director can chime in.
Mr. Mayor and council, I would just say that I believe that those of us on the Public Works Committee, we, at least it was my impression, and it was discussed, that that was, we wanted continuity within our buildings, because we know that the Rice Park Shelter looks great. I guess, at least at the committee level, we all agreed that that looked great, and that that was the direction we were going to proceed. I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus for making a mistake, because I'm not exactly sure who exactly I would even throw under the bus for that, but...
Tell me what the heck.
Whomever. And it might have been an oversight of mine. If it was, I apologize, but the question was asked, and it was discussed, and I do believe that we were believing that that was the color that we were after, and we were bidding out a colored roof. I think what may have been an unknown, and I may be incorrect in this, but this is just my assumption, is that although we were bidding a colored roof, we did not know that this particular color had an additional upcharge. And so, if that was an oversight of mine or of our committees, I'll take ownership of that, but that is the case that I believe it might be.
Councilmember Schwantes.
So, then, does that mean we do not know what color we are leaving to go to the gold color? We don't know if it's red or green or whatever? I'll be honest with you, two-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents to change the color of the roof to match a building that is across town doesn't make any sense to me, especially when we don't know what color we are leaving. I have a hard time imagining green would not be acceptable there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it was discussed that, moving forward, we are going to be doing additional building works and whatnot, and it has been discussed at some level that we are looking for a level of continuity when it comes to the exterior facades of these buildings. And I know that with future buildings coming, a lot of cities do try to find that continuity and exterior appearance. With regard to the question that's asked whether or not we are actually leaving a color or whether or not there was another color, maybe it was a similar color or whatnot, that I do not know. I would have to defer to the individuals specifically involved with that project as to whether or not we are leaving another color, if there was some other completely different color bid out. I was under the impression that it was going to be a matching color.
Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, I would, I've seen enough of these construction projects to know that, that there's a standard slate of colors. It'll be your hunter green, or your brick red, or whatever those colors are, but there's, let's say there's six of them, and once you deviate from that particular color palette that is standard, any change would cost you more. So, at this point, it was just a painted roof, and it could have been one of six or seven colors. All we had to do was pick it out, and it wouldn't have cost us anything. But because we wanted a specific color, that's the upcharge. You see this in automobiles all the time. They come in these colors. You want the fiery red one, you pay an extra six hundred dollars for it, you know? So, this is not unusual. It's just that I think it was something that, I think, we, as a community, said we wanted to have this color to match, and I think the documentation didn't coordinate with that fact, the actual bidding documents didn't. You know, I, that would be my understanding of the situation, so if you want that color, you would have to pay an upcharge.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, discussion was had, too, regarding other colors, and I guess the committee, if I recall correctly, somebody from the committee can correct me if I'm wrong, but we did not necessarily want to be arbitrarily picking colors, because that would almost feel as though it was kind of micromanaging to us, and so, we kind of thought going with that continuity color palette on the exterior of our new park and rec buildings would be something, and it was advised to us through staff, so that that may be a good, a good move, whether or not there was going to be an extra charge regarded, regarding that. I was unaware of that until now, but we deemed it to be acceptable.
You know, I'm just going to speak to it. I mean, we're talking one building. I think the number was twenty-four hundred dollars. You know, I think they're looking at probably four or five additional buildings at least out of Robins Island, so you have to multiply this times four or five. And then, we're looking at other city buildings that are being built currently, so you multiply it by that. So, if we're going with that same analogy that we're going to match the colors, this isn't the one-time cost. This is a ongoing cost of continued buildings down the road, and we're going to have an additional cost. Of course, we'll probably build contingencies in those, and we'll spend all that contingency too, just because we spend contingencies. That's what we do.
To be fair, we saw a fit to pay the upcharge on the Rice Park Shelter.
Correct. Also, member Nelson.
I think the intent when we went to a metal roof, the conversation was to match Rice Park, and so, I'm not sure that we realized there was going to be an upcharge, but I do think matching that building is the right thing to do. That is a statement, and this one will be one also, and I think it's important that we follow through on that color.
Can we buy a bunch of this paint and just provide it when we get the contract? I feel like we are getting a little in the weeds on colors, and we'll buy extra and put it on all the roofs. I think maybe it might be time with all these park projects, and when we keep talking, we got new signage, and we go, we want the signage to match, and now, we're going to match the paint colors. Let's put some of this down in writing, so when we do a contract, we say, these are the things that we expect. This is what our signage is going to look like, this is what the paint's going to look like, and if it's a unique paint that costs too much money, let's buy a bunch of it and have it here, and we can do it when we unveil these projects. I don't understand, we're getting into some minutia here, this is a problem we can solve, and if we need to start documenting these standards for all the parks, we can just roll it out, I think that might be very helpful, so we're not here at the next project and the next one.
A motion made and seconded. I have a question in regards to the water main size, and again, you might think this is getting into minutia as well, but the local option sales tax has funding for the water line in it as well, and having been a person that's worked in water a lot, I can almost guarantee you that four-inch line is going to get reduced down to an inch, maybe an inch and a quarter, inch and a half. And so, you know, we can say this is micromanaging, we can say this is getting down in the details, but, you know, I don't know. I mean, it just seems like we're trying to spend the contingency to make sure that we spend the contingency. That's the way it looks to me.
Do you think we could get some comments from our city engineer regarding water size?
Yeah.
All right.
Mayor, members of the council, as far as the water size goes, originally bid out as a two-and-a-half inch, and that was to supply the amount of water needed for the automatic toilets, automatic faucets. Upon timing and bidding of that project, it sounds like a two-and-a-half inch is not a common size any longer, although it used to be, so that's why they upsized it to four. Along with that, because my original thought was we'll just go down to two, that that would be enough, it'd be more than enough, but by upsizing it to four, it has more than enough water capacity to, to, for all the automatic toilets probably to go at the same time, as well as we're extending beyond this building to other parts of the park and to other new buildings for water service. And so, this four inch is basically the service, whereas the water line is being put in with the rest of the, with some other sales tax funds, will be in, probably an eight inch, comes from the other side of the park.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mayor. In all fairness, I don't think anybody's trying to spend the contingency. My understanding from the discussion we had on this is that the present pipes were really old, and so, anytime that you get into remodeling or doing any kind of a project, it's like, now is the time. So, now is the time to improve the size of those, and the adequate size was a four inch. Same thing with the color. We were under the impression that we were bidding the same color, as was Rice Park. We wanted the same building, the same look. That was the thought process going forward, and just like Councilmember Plowman said, I don't think anybody knows where in the process of the bidding that that color did not get stated, but that would be the color that we would like to see on there. That's what was agreed upon, and everybody thought that would look the best, and that's just the change order number one that came with the shelter.
And I just want to make it clear that I am not saying that our city staff or the council want to spend the contingency. If that was construed, that that's what I was inferring, that was not at all what I was construed, what I was attempting to say. I have bid a number of projects in my career, and I know firsthand that when you have contingencies, the vendor comes back to try to capture those. I think our staff is very reliable. I think our staff has done a good job, and I believe the council has as well. It's just that these things are presented to us, so I was not being disparaging to council and/or staff, if that was the assumption. That was not the intent. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, too, had frustrations in the committee when we were discussing this. We believed that we had asked for a certain color. We were expecting a certain color on the roof. We thought it was taken care of, like the chairman said, for the committee. We don't know where it went wrong. We don't know how it went wrong, but it, it went wrong. We determined that as a, as a committee, that we wanted consistency for the city of Wilmer. We wanted it to look like Rice Park, and so, we made the decision, with the trust of the council, to make that decision, and we made the decision to proceed with matching roof color. We also saw the future of the park, and we believe that we're going to need the water capacity for other buildings, so we believe that that was the right way to go. So, was this made lightly? No. Was there discussion? Yes. But we agree with Mr. Mesky that there are certain parameters that we should include, and they should be standardized, and if, if we want the same colored roof, hopefully, we can get a discount because of quantity. I don't know, but we want that in there, and we don't want, we don't want surprises. Nobody wants surprises. So, it was a lively discussion, and we did, we did address it. Thank you.
So, knowing that, that helps as well, because then, if there are concerns of the other four councilmembers and the mayor, maybe those are understandable, if you had those discussions as well, because we were not in those discussions.
Correct.
So, we have a motion that's been made and seconded to approve a resolution for change order number one at Robins Island. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one knee.
Resolution passes. Next, I'm sorry, Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah, I still have a few more. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We'll see if I can get through them. As required by state statute, a report is required for the 2020 street and other improvements. The report is to contain the boundaries of the area of improvements, the estimated cost, the total amount payable from special assessments, and the total amount of bonds the city intends to issue. The report will indicate the financial burden the city will need to assume in terms of the demand upon money in the general fund and the impact of the city's borrowing capacity. The list of streets and other proposed projects for 2020 has been prepared. The city council is required to order the preparation of the improvements report explaining the proposed improvements as well as the estimated costs. Sources of funding for the 2020 improvement projects includes money, monies from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, assessments, federal and state aid funds, and bond proceeds. And I will make a motion to order the 2020 improvement report now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our final item of discussion is regarding a snow emergency, and it's titled on here, "Snow Emergency Ordinance," but I do not believe that we're actually speaking with regards to the ordinance. Currently, snow urgencies are issued for the city of Wilmer in the central business district to clean and haul out snow and then start understanding after significant or deemed significant events. The area affected is from First Street to Seventh Street Southwest and from Trot Avenue to the bypass. Citizens can use city parking lots to park cars normally parked on the streets in this area. The snow emergency runs from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. the following morning, and any vehicles left on the streets will be towed at the owner's expense. The news release for the event is typically published on social media, announced in the area radio stations, and also in the U.S. Central Tribune. Signs are also placed on barrels throughout the downtown area as well to notify citizens and move their cars before 10:00 p.m. that night. With that said, we have been exploring the idea of potentially being able to declare a snow emergency for the city of Wilmer and everything that entails, and it is by no means a simple process figuring out exactly how to do that. There are all kinds of variables and factors to be considered, and we have run the gamut of different scenarios and potential fixes, as well as setbacks, some difficulties that may lie in the way. In addressing this, I believe we've taken the time to reach out for legal consult regarding our ability to declare a snow emergency citywide without the creation of a new ordinance. We have discussed the different technological components that would aid us in implementing this and educating the public as to how this would occur, and staff has put a great deal of research into these different items, and then, we've also discussed, along with the outreach, the actual implementation of the plan, and we had lengthy, lengthy discussion. This was probably an item that we have spent the most collaborative time on with all of our past public works meetings, discussing the exact, the actual hows, whats, wheres, whens, and those various components of how that would happen. We believe that it would not necessarily be in the best interest for the council to dictate exactly how this is going to happen, because council members are not the ones plowing the streets. We are not the ones towing the vehicles. We are not... We are not the ones, um, having to make all these different assessments on the fly of small, snow emergency events or what could potentially be snow emergency events. Therefore, we are relying on staff, um, to help craft this policy. And, uh, I had also taken time to meet, uh, with representatives with our, uh, with our, uh, engineering director, um, our public works director, as well as our public works, uh, superintendent that oversees all of the plowing as well as, uh, uh, law enforcement. Our captain did join us as well for the discussion of this so that we could get all ideas, uh, thoughts and concerns out on the table. And we do believe that we have, um, a potential plan, uh, in the works. Uh, to discuss the actual, um, details of this plan and maybe we can kind of start with the, with the legal, uh, the legal portion and then move on to the technologic, uh, the technology, uh, that we've been discussing. And then we'll finally, uh, finish with the implementation, what exactly, um, we plan to do, how and when. And, uh, for that, uh, if possible, if we can call on our public works director, um, to guide us through this process, that would be appreciated.
Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, councilmember Plowman. Upon starting this process or this conversation, we were, um, told after research done by attorney Scott that the ordinance we have in place and the policy we have in place is sufficient for what we were trying to do. We don't need a new ordinance. We don't need a new resolution to, um, do exactly what, uh, we're describing here. Unless we want to divide the town into sections or do an odd even address type situation or a north, south, east, west type situation, then, uh, we'll need to go back through the resolution process or the, the ordinance process and, and tweak that existing ordinance. As it stands right now, the ordinance is in place that allows the city to declare a snow emergency. Um, and we have been doing that as, uh, councilmember Plowman started. We have been doing that for the central business district only at this point. Most people are aware, if you're watching, uh, you know, during snow events or large snow events, you see at the bottom of the news and it's got snow emergencies declared in certain towns across the, across the state. We've gathered some of that information. We've gathered some of their different codes and, and, uh, policies. And the bottom line is what we would like to try to do is if we declare a snow emergency, um, over the entire town is ultimately not allow any parking on any city street until those streets are cleared. And that's what it boils down to. Now, getting to that point has become the, the point of, of, of quite a, quite a bit of discussion. So if you're one of the people that needs to move your car, you might only have to move it for 30 minutes if you're, happen to be on a street that gets plowed first. You might have to move it for four to six hours until your street gets cleared. But the bottom line is to get those, the cars off of the street until the plows and the drivers have had a chance to get through and get all, get the snow off of the street from curb to curb. What we don't want to do for the safety of the public, um, is get into a situation that we did last year where we had back-to-back large snow events at the end of the year and end up with a few streets in town that, uh, you'd be hard pressed to get, uh, the fire department down those streets without damaging cars or, or structures. Um, our own structures or the public cars. So we'd like to keep the streets clear. We'd like to keep them clear for safety, the traveling public. We'd like to keep them clear for the safety of our guys. And, uh, you know, there's, uh, accidents happen. We tangle unfortunately with a, with a, a few cars a year when, when we're trying to plow around them. They're either, um, harder to see, the, the plows and the trucks are getting, you know, with the wings on them are, are hard to, hard to maneuver sometimes. And sometimes getting around those vehicles are, are difficult at best. Um, then what happens is they get plowed around and the wind drill around your car. Um, you can't get out, you get, people get stuck. They'll call, uh, public works and ask them to come back and clear them out or after they've been moved. So we've got some, some issues we try to, we'd like to take care of in, in one, uh, one fell swoop here. That being said, legality, I think we're, we're good to go the way we, the way we are. Um, what we have been doing, we just need to expand that. We've looked into some software that, uh, the city can participate in. The, uh, PD and sheriff office already does this to, to an extent as far as being able to notify citywide, um, people on, on different emergencies. The software we've looked at, we've had a couple presentations on. We'd like to, we, we'd like to get in, get into that situation where we can not only notify the general public of, of snow emergencies, but, but also, um, not everyday things, but, but different types of city, city functions. So maybe we have, um, we have a, uh, something going on at the, the brush site we want to let everybody know about. We have, um, it's not going to be a, what we don't want to happen is to have it be a, you know, little, little, little Sally's, you know, birthday party, come join us. It's not going to be something like that. It's, it's, it's city business. Um, we'd like to start with this emergency, snow emergency type thing and, and get everybody as much notice as we can. That coupled with our already, um, fairly well-known social media with Facebook and Twitter, um, between, uh, between public works and PD and the city in general has, we've got three, at least three different accounts that we can, we can make, we can get some, some notification out there. This, uh, software we looked at has, has the opportunity to contact, immediate, uh, automatically contact the newspaper and the radio so that we can have, so that we can have those, uh, types of information outlets available as well. Um, as far as, as far as, uh, actually getting the snow removed, the guys have been very good with the, let's say, if there is such a thing as a standard significant snowfall, you know, not 18 inches to two feet, but in the, you know, four to eight inch range, we can, uh, cover the entire town in less than an eight-hour day. And so, um, most recently, we've been starting at about 4:00 AM. And so by noon, most, you know, most of the town, if not all of the town is, is completely covered. And so logistically, if we can get cars removed and get this actually to happen the way we're envisioning that could happen, the, uh, all the streets in town could be plowed curb to curb by noon on the day that we call the, we call the, uh, the snow emergency. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I rambled a little bit. Sorry about that. I would stand for any questions. Um, Gary's here. If he's got any question, if you've got any questions specifically to the plow drivers and the 20-plus trucks and vehicles we have on the, on the road trying to get rid of the snow at the same time, um, to routes. Uh, he counted cars last time. I mean, he went to that level of, of research after we did a, a, a snow event. So, um, stand for any questions or, or concerns you might have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before we get into discussion, I would just like to offer this preamble. Um, there's a reason that this is not a already crafted policy by our committee and that is because there's so many different facets, um, that are beyond the scope of expertise by those on our committee. And we're, we are heavily relying on city staff for that expertise. And beyond that, then, that was something that, um, once staff is able to wrap their arms around this issue, bring us back the information, their thoughts and suggestions and whatnot, it was something that we didn't necessarily want to, um, uh, take and whittle away at, at the committee level. We thought it was a council-level idea because it's a big thing. Uh, we are aware that there are challenges. We are very aware that it is a, uh, that it's a big, it's a big leap. It's a big policy. Um, and it's not going to be without, um, some, some trial and error. But a lot of thought has been, at least in our discussions at the committee level and with, uh, various staff members, um, and, you know, whether it be public works, public safety, um, and even planning development, um, there are different facets and it seems like we're really covering our bases now and like a lot of different things have been thought of. So I'll speak highly that I do appreciate the research that's been put in thus far. Um, yeah, and so questions are highly encouraged and other thoughts. And, and we knew that, uh, coming in tonight, uh, to tonight, that it would probably be a good thing to have questions and discussion revolving around it. Therefore, uh, maybe bringing up some other ideas or perspectives that we have yet to think of before unrolling this and implementing it. So that would be great.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and Mr. Christensen, wonderful recap. You didn't ramble. Um, one piece that we also, uh, had a lot of discussion about at the committee level was educating the public. And, uh, because nobody wants to tow anybody's car. I mean, that, just like when we do a parade, when we go down, when we have done the snow emergencies in downtown, the, the goal is to not have to tow anybody's car. So education was key to get the information out there. So once it is kind of firmed up how it's going to happen, what exactly the steps are, um, that the public needs to, um, take, then, um, I think we're, we're going to hit this hard with education, with the paper, with the radio, and make sure that everybody understands what's expected of them to make our streets safe. I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, maybe we could call on Mr. Manzer to speak directly to, um, first, um, how, when, when, uh, a snow emergency would be established and, and declared. Um, and then number two, um, when the program is first, uh, beginning, how exactly are we going to go about? Because a- as we know from the numbers that we saw, uh, previous snowfall, there were literally hundreds of cars in certain areas and we know that that's logistically impossible to, um, to tow slash impound hundreds of cars. So we're going to address that as well. But if Mr. Manzer would be so kind as to address, uh, some of those topics, uh, maybe shed light on those for us, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Plowman and the council. Um, so we had this discussion last year. I remember we talked about, we kind of, we targeted the east side and we, we kind of went through that. And so, um, I just got some notes here because this has been a couple of weeks ago, but we had snow and I think it was Thanksgiving weekend and we had two snow events, one right prior to Thanksgiving. We got about six inches of snow. And then we got another snow on Saturday of that weekend was about three inches of snow, I think. So Sunday morning, um, we plowed snow and we started at 4:00 AM. And so I, I thought for the heck of it, I'm going to drive. So I drove the entire city from, uh, 18th Street Southwest all the way to Lakeland Drive. And I didn't go south of Wilmer Avenue and I didn't go north of Highway 12 and I didn't go through the downtown. So I took out that part I didn't drive. I do, this was mostly residential area. And on the east side of town, I counted 238 parked cars in the, in that area. The west side of town, I counted 346 parked cars that we plowed around on that Sunday. Um, I think that number would have been higher the day before Thanksgiving. Plus, for one reason, it was the day before Thanksgiving, so a lot of people were probably in town with their families. The set, second was our first major snow, snow event, so people probably weren't prepared maybe here. And so I think that that number that I gave you of 584 cars was a smaller number than what it was on the Wednesday prior to. Um, with that being said, I did not go north of the railroad tracks at all. I did not go, uh, south of Wilmer Avenue. I did actually go into Pheasant Run. We had some damage done to something over there, so I had to go pick up some stuff. So I thought, well, as long as I'm in Pheasant Run, I'll run through there. I did not go anywhere east of, uh, 25th Street. I just kind of got to Littlebury and I had 40 cars in the Pheasant Run area. Each one of those areas in Pheasant Run and where I seen vehicles that all had driveways that were sitting empty, you know, it's just a, I, I suppose it was a convenience thing for the people that lived there that they didn't want to, you know, just park and they're used to that. So some of the things that I brought up at our meetings before is that, that happens with us is, is, um, on a event, we plow, we plow the entire city and we have nine different plow routes, not including parking lots or the airport or sidewalks or paths. These are just plow routes that, um, go by residential places. So I feel like most areas of town within a couple of hours have a street within a few blocks of them that's been plowed. Most snowfalls, six hours, we're pretty much gone by everything. Um, maybe a little, it, that's providing I have a full staff to, you know, the things happen where you're short and you're shuffling people around. But, um, I, I had a person call me that lived on southeast 11th Street in the south of Bethesda area, neighborhood there. And he calls me up and he says, hey, I'm new to town. I rent here. My landlord doesn't allow me to park in the driveway. Your plow went by and plowed me in. Is there a chance that he could come back? I'll move the cars so he could get it. So I, I called the guy that does that area and he happened to be just like a block away. So he swung back and took care of it. But what struck me was that the landlord didn't allow him to park in the driveway, but yet there would have been room for him to park in the driveway. Typically, we have 10 to 12 snow events a year and I, I don't foresee this happening on every snowfall, but there are bigger snowfalls where I think it, it needs to happen. And, uh, so if we have 10 to 12 events a year, maybe half of those events would be something that would declare a snow emergency. As far as the timing, we talked about it, that's really a key component. Um, if you remember last Sunday, I think it was Sunday or month, yeah, it would have been last Monday, we plowed snow. We got like five inches or something, but the forecast was three to five inches, three to five inches. And Sunday night, nothing was happening and nothing was happening. So I conferred with a couple of guys, I said, well, let's go to work at five anyways so I can get the guys to know that the day before we go to five. We ended up getting a lot more snow than I thought. Had I known that snow was coming, that might've been a perfect example that we could have called a snow emergency. But the same token, you don't want to call a snow emergency and not get the snow either. So that, well, the timing was not good on that snowfall. Where it would really be helpful is if we're in a snowfall during the day and we know that, okay, we've got three, four inches on the ground, looks like we're going to get two or three tonight, let's call a snow emergency at four o'clock and we're going to start plowing at four in the morning, a citywide snow emergency and, um, please have your car off the street. Once we've been caught, plowed by curb to curb, you're welcome to park back there. Thing that happens a lot of times too is that people park and we plow around them so they get out and they park right in front of it. So we don't have a chance to get that off. And pretty soon you have ice buildup and, and then we, you know, we broke equipment hitting that ice buildup or, you know, big chunks fly off and knock mailboxes over. We're notorious for knocking them over anyways without having that to it. So timing is a real issue. Um, one of the things we talked about is, I mean, nobody wants to tow vehicles. It's an inconvenience. It's also an inconvenience for us to go around these vehicles too. And, um, one of the things I, Sean and I wrote, I think that was last year, a couple of our parking lots that host our, that our apartments, parking lots, placard their parking lots prior to a snow event and said, no parking in our parking lot until this lot is cleared. Park on the city streets. We had two streets, we couldn't even get a snowplow down because there were so many cars there. That would be a real tragedy if there was a fire in that, that facility. So just some things to think about. I know it's not going to be easy. I know it's going to be an educational thing. Uh, we had some ideas about, instead of, uh, you know, ticketing and towing, there would be, there's no way we could ticket and tow 500 and some cars if that was the case. Um, 20 cars would be a lot. But, you know, um, we talked in these meetings about maybe we get some, uh, placards or stickers or whatever that I could, I could, uh, get some engineering staff when we had a snow event, say, okay, let's call this a snow emergency event and you go ahead of these, we got these seven different routes and some of us could go placard, just put these stickers on cars saying, this would be a snow event. You would have been ticketed or towed or both, you know, and then explain where to get the information on how to, you know, be alerted about, about it. And the way I see it, it's a, probably at best, it's an eight-hour inconvenience. For the worst-case scenario, it's an eight-hour inconvenience for people. Um, best-case scenario, it's a half hour, you know, so. And if you have any other questions, I'd be, entertain anything you have to ask me, I guess.
Councilmember, uh, you was.
Well, first of all, um, being downtown, I want to say you guys do a great job because I went down there at five in the morning to bake and I was expecting piles of of snow, and it was done. And I was amazed. But second, our driveway, we have two kids that park in the street. So, if we had a text message at night, that would be really helpful, because we go to bed, we forget. We leave, my husband and I leave first before them, so we don't think about having them park in the driveway. But if we remember, we have them park there, and then we move them out and put them back when we go for work.
Right. So, this system that we, we kind of looked into, this alert system, and that's exactly how it works. You'd get a text message as soon as we decided we would do that. And the way I understood it, that would be Sean or myself, or together, we would declare that we're going to do this, and then we would just activate it through our phone, that this would go out, and it goes out to, apparently, they have a database already in place of different phone numbers for areas, plus you get people to sign up for it. Am I looking at what other cities do? I've seen several cities that have the exact same thing, and it says, winter parking, click on here for alerts, you know? And then, you subscribe, I don't know if you subscribe to, or you're part of it anyways, and then you'd get that text message, email, phone call, or all three. Yeah, it really looked like a slick deal. The one we were looking at, they talked about like water main repair in cities, like, one city had read, boil your, you don't have to boil your water any longer now, because they got the water main repaired, and that was part of that alert system. And you could even map it down to, say, a neighborhood. Let's say you were going to do Pheasant Run, you know, you could just alert the Pheasant Run numbers and stuff.
Thanks, Member Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manzer, for all of your help and expertise in helping craft this and direct us just a little bit further. We did discuss other various topics. We know that when it comes to having a location to move your vehicle to, that was one of the most difficult and contentious parts. Now, it wasn't contentious between us, but it's just, it's difficult, because staff understands, and the council understands, that with apartment complexes, as well as the number of rental properties, that getting the word out there and coming up with solutions for where vehicles are going to go and when is an integral part of making this work. We also, another staff member identified the fact that we do have a database for all of the landlord properties, as well as other rental properties in the entire city, within the entire city limits. We can craft and generate a letter that would go out to them prior to this taking place, explaining what Wilmer was going to be doing when a snow emergency is declared. We still don't know what kind of authority we have in terms of, you know, we have heard comments about potentially landlords not allowing parking in their driveway, and that is, that's admittedly a stumbling block, because it seems a little unusual that a landlord would do that, I guess. But maybe there's something that I am not thinking of. But, that aside, we're thinking of different ways utilizing technology, utilizing the databases that we have, and the communication techniques that we have, to reach just as many people as possible to educate them prior to this ever happening, to try to get people. And then, followed by, the first time, the second time, the third time, when this starts taking place, it wouldn't be the intent to get out there and start towing vehicles, because we understand that there's going to be a learning curve. So, if there could be something like a neon sticker that might be somewhat difficult and annoying to remove from your side window, but also containing instructions, a snow emergency has been declared, you know, these are the steps that have to be taken when there's a snow emergency declared, here are the places that you can go for more information and whatnot. That's something that would be mostly an annoyance, but there would not be a financial penalty, there would not be the inconvenience of having to go get your car from an impound lot. And we would allow that to continue for some duration of time before actually upping the ante, so to speak. And we do expect that the learning curve then would kind of kick in, and that, you know, if we receive the kind of snowfall that we did, say, last year, for example, as this continues, the number of parked cars, we would expect to continually drop, and word-of-mouth spreads, and the other information on social media, local news outlets and whatnot continues to spread. But our number-one main concern always is safety for the citizens of Wilmer, and then expediency and efficiency when it comes to our Public Works crews being out there. And also, you know, they have their routes down, they have them well-defined, where they're going to be and when they're going to be there. And Mr. Manzer said on a number of occasions that if they did not have to deal with parked vehicles, they could quite substantially increase, or decrease, the amount of time, rather, that it would take them to actually get through the entire city. So, instead of being done with the entire city by, say, 10:00, if these obstacles were removed, they could be done potentially a lot sooner, allowing for better, higher-quality cleanup. So, that being said, we know that it's very aggressive, but we are trying to do everything we can to tie up the loose ends.
Two quick things. This has been, my understanding is, this has been talked about for about 15 or 20 years. We are committed to making this happen in 2020, by the time this all gets finalized and the information is disseminated to the public. This is going to happen. So, we need to start educating, and need to start thinking about how we're going to tweak this and make this as seamless as possible. And just talking about knowing when or how, when you have to plan to put your car in your driveways, I like to think that it will become second nature, that you're going to be watching the news. I think just about every major snow event that we have, there is, you know it. I mean, they're saying on the news, we're going to get seven to 10 inches, and you see which part of the state is getting what, and we're going to know that that snow event is coming, and hopefully, again, it will be second nature, that get your cars off the street, because the plows are going to come through.
Just one comment. I just want to point out, for those of you that were fortunate enough to watch Emily Larson, the mayor of Duluth, report that she gave after their snow event, their big snow event that they had. They had parts of their community that hadn't been plowed for three days. And so, kudos to our Public Works people. You guys are rock stars. So, we appreciate that. And surprising thing to me is they have 40 pieces of plow equipment. So, take a look, they have 570 miles, 40 pieces of plow equipment. I don't know how many pieces we have, but I think you said we have nine routes. So, I mean, so we, you know, our guys do good work, so. Thank you, guys, for addressing this.
And, Mr. Mayor? With that, I would like to, I would like to make a motion, actually, to authorize city staff to finalize the drafting of a policy, a formalized snow emergency policy for the city of Wilmer, and implement the policy beginning 2020.
Second.
Motion made in second of discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? The motion does carry. Great work. Thanks, Member Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me jump back to my notes here. I apologize, because it seems like I've been talking a really, really long time, so. I think-
There's just that part about throwing me under the bus.
Yeah. No, I offered to jump there, too. And you know what? After that discussion regarding the snow emergency, looks like we were done about 10 after 7:00, so I would actually move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second to file minutes, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? The motion carries. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We're reconvening the city council for Wilmer on December 16th. Councilmember Nelson, Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor Nelson. The Finance Committee full council meeting at, was not the full council meeting, I apologize. Finance Committee meeting was held at 5:15 on Thursday, December 5th, in the conference room at the City Office Building. Presidents were Councilmember Nelson, Plowman, and Osmas. In addition, was Finance Director Okens, Airport Director Eric Grundigun, Justin Boyk, Municipal Utilities Manager John Heron, Municipal Utilities Finance Director Denise Rungy, and EDC Director Aaron Backwin. After the meeting was called to order, there were no public comments, and our first item was to look at the Boyk ag lease, and we did have a motion regarding that. There was lengthy discussion, again, about updating his lease as it relates to ag land around the Wilmer Y project. There was still further discussion that needed to take place in regards to the acreage and access, and so, we did not do anything as far as the actual ag lease. What we did do was make a motion to defer issuing invoices to Mr. Boyk for the annual rent for the applicable parcels until an agreement could be reached upon, for parcels number one, two, four, and six. And I will enter that motion now.
Second. Motion made in second to defer issuing invoices for the Boyk ag leases. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? The motion carries. Councilmember Plowman. I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The next item was the Epitopic Sewer Line, and we did pass a resolution earlier regarding the grant that was received, and so, I will not go through that documentation. The motion that we had at the Finance Meeting was to introduce a resolution to increase the 2020 budget by 1.3 million in both revenues and expenditure as presented, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made in second to increase the 2020 budget and expenditures by 1.3 million. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Chuantas?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
The next item was a resolution regarding the intergovernmental transfer agreement with Caris Health, and I believe you all received some emails today. There is a correction to the amount that I will review in the minutes, and it's my understanding that that should resolve the question that was asked regarding this. So, the adjustment was being made regarding the ESPN payment, which stands for Equitable Cost Public Nursing Facilities. And so, as this reads, it was pursuant to the affiliation agreement and related operating agreement between the City of Wilmer Center Care Health System and Caris Health. The real property upon which the Rice Hospital facilities and the care facilities are located is exempt from paying real estate taxes. Previously, Rice Hospital and the city had entered into agreements whereby the hospital would remit to the city annual negotiated intergovernmental transfer payments in consideration for the municipal services provided to Rice Hospital by the city. Both parties continue to desire to continue this annual intergovernmental transfer. At the start of the lease, the annual payment was $300,000, and it is being proposed that this continues with 2020. There have been two increases to that amount, and the correct amount for 2020 is now 318, is estimated at $318,270. And it is also proposed that the ECPN payments be continued for 2020 in the amount of $5,900. And it was moved and seconded to authorize a resolution to authorize the mayor and the city administrator to execute the agreement and the ESPN payments between that, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made in second to authorize execution of an agreement for intergovernmental transfers and ECPN payments. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Chuantas?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Our next item was to write off uncollectible accounts receivable. On November 1st, 2017, invoices were issued for the second-half payment of the 2017 crop land leases. On December 6th, 2017, invoices were issued for late fees on those invoices. The total outstanding was $29,636.89 for tracks one and six in row four. These amounts were forwarded to the city attorney to assist in pursuing collection, who we then issued a notification to the party involved on April 5th, 2018. Since these invoices remained unpaid, a second notice was issued by the attorney on June 28th, 2018, pursuing collection. On July 30th, 2018, a bankruptcy notice was received and forwarded on to the city attorney. On November 27th, 2018, a second bankruptcy notice was received detailing the discharge of the debts. On May 23rd, 2019, another notice to file claims was received, which was forwarded on to the city attorney. $576.51 was received as a final settlement. Subsequently, the remaining balance of $29,060.38 needs to be written off as uncollectible. And it was moved and seconded to introduce a resolution to write off the uncollectible accounts receivable balance of $29,060.38, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made in second of discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Chuantas?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The next item is regarding a resolution to appropriate undesignated balance to the auditorium. Following the discussion from budget meetings, after the council approved the 2020 budget, there is a remaining amount of $485,000 in undesignated funds. Councilmember Nelson is recommending that the amount be appropriated to unfunded auditorium improvements, including tuck pointing for 400, ADA requirements to the elevator and bathroom, the amount of 600, and roof gutter replacement for $350,000. It is understood that the 485,000 will not be able to fully fund these expenditures, but will be earmarked toward that end. And it was moved and seconded to introduce a resolution to approve the remaining undesignated funds of 485,000 in the 2020 budget for a portion of the unfunded auditorium capital improvements, and I will enter that resolution now.
Second.
Motion made in second of discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky?
Aye.
Chuantas?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmas?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The rest of the items were for discussion only. We did have a presentation from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Finance Director and a financial status compared to a year ago. Revenues and expenditures are pretty much right on budget to date. Compared to last year, revenue to date is down slightly, and operating expenditures to date are also down slightly. Retained earnings to date are $6,440,891, which is up from last year's retained earnings of $5,893,261. The status of the district heat was briefly reviewed, noting that June 30th, 2020, will be the last date for that system. At this point, future use of the district heating building is undecided. The next item was for information. We received the current fund balance policy. For our annual review, this policy will be discussed at the next Finance Committee meeting. That same item, or the same thing applies to the investment policy. We will review that at the next Finance Committee meeting. And under miscellaneous, I thank the Finance Committee and the council for their efforts in reviewing and adopting the 2020 budget. For next year's budget process, some of the things that were documented by council members or requested were timing of delivery for the initial proposed budget to the council to be reviewed, to be sure to adhere to the charter, city charter requirements. Further, to review the CIP priorities is something that should be closely reviewed, including street funding and the $4 utility improvement fee, the franchise fee, the debt service for City Hall, technology enhancements, increased community engagement in the budget process, and to make sure that one-time money is used for one-time projects. There was no other further business to come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:30 p.m., and I will enter a motion to approve the minutes now.
Second.
Motion made in second to file minutes. The Finance Committee, December 5th. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to remind the public for this uncollectible accounts receivable, we changed our policy. So, if they rent land now, the rent has to be the first of the year, instead of during the season or at the end, so it shouldn't happen again, hopefully.
Good. Okay. Okay. Other discussion. In favor of the filing of minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, then motion carries. Council. Liberty Relations Committee reported, December 9th. Councilmember Mesky.
Yes, we met December 9th, 6:15. All of our regular members were there. The addition of our HR Director Beckman and City Administrator Grammets were there as well. No members from the public. The first item that we're bringing forward as a motion this evening is for the hiring of the fire, deputy fire chief. We did put that in the budget for this year, and you have in your packet the description that we've already approved in the past. This is basically approving the filling of that position with a start date of February 3rd, and I will put that motion out now.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the hiring of the deputy fire chief for the fire department. Discussion. In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, then motion carries. Councilmember Mesky.
The next one is about the increasing the firefighter para retirement. They have money in a pool where they fund retirements, and they are overfunded in those accounts, so they can actually increase those retirement levels. We used to have it internally, and that dropped off to a state-funded system that has been slowly moving upward, but the recommendation was moving to a $5,000 per year of good service in that benefit. We had discussion, and in your packet is various levels, and then you will see, if you're looking at that page, it's 204 in your packet. It does have, on the top line, the benefit level of what that would be, and if you look down to the fifth line, that gives you the percent of it funded. And so the recommendation at $5,000 per year of good service, you can see that the funding in the actual pool is at 106%. And so there was an expectation that they should be able to fund that level. However, you should be aware that if there is ever a failure to have that funded, that would come on to the city. However, the likelihood of that, at that level, everybody believed would be very unlikely. And so the recommendation from the committee, we did have some discussion of various levels, was the $5,000 level, and I will make that motion at this time.
Second.
Motion made in second to consider the firefighter retirement increased to $5,000. Discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. So I'm curious, when some of the other increments, that it went up at 500, that two of the alternative was increase it at 4,800 or leave it at 4,000, why wasn't 4,500 an option?
Well, you see, if it's funded at 117%, that you can afford to put those extra dollars into the firefighters' pockets. We do not put money into this account, but we would if it were ever short. And my understanding is, you can't decrease the amount you set it at.
Right.
So, if we were to approve this, it would be at the 5,000 as long as we would be doing this. Yep.
Okay, but let's say there is an adjustment in the stock markets, and the economy has a recession. Wouldn't we be protecting ourselves better if we were at 4,500 instead of at the 5,000, and then we'd have to make up any difference if their investments weren't making what they thought they were supposed to in their investment account, their retirement account?
We talked about lots of scenarios about that, and it's very much a moving target. I'll share that. That's where we fell. We had those dialogues, and there were motions of moving at different levels. City Administrator Grammets had some comments. I don't know if he'd like to share those at this time about your crystal ball, or what you've seen in the past.
Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, on this particular topic, 2008 is probably the most recent time where the stock market took a tumble, and if you happen to be utilizing the old Fire Relief Association method, you had your retirement funds invested in stocks and bonds, and it's much more volatile than through PRA. They're pretty conservative, and that's where the, it's less likely going to happen scenario comes into play. If it was the old system, you know, I would say, you know, even at 100%, it could go down, you know, 20% in a catastrophic event, but at 106% and with the state of Minnesota's investment policies, it's really not likely going to happen, but there's always a chance. And ultimately, what happens is, even if it drops a certain percentage, let's say it drops to 90, the requirement for the city to kick in the shortfall may not occur until it gets to 80. And I don't remember the exact number, because I have not used the PRA system, but I am aware that the old Fire Relief Association, and that's run by the state also, or controlled by the state, that once it got past the trigger, then the city was on the hook. But, you know, just to get down to 90%, you'd have to drop 16% of the portfolio, and that's a pretty good chunk. And so I would say that this is about as safe as it gets, one, with being state-run PRA, and two, even at 5,000, you're still over 100% funded. So I would not have any concerns about this. And I think when we looked at, you know, the 4,000, that was just giving you a range, you could leave it where it's at, or you could, you know, go up to 5,500, but the recommendation was not to go below 100%, and that left us at the $5,000 mark.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe this is a question for the fire chief. Is this seen, or somebody on the labor committee, is this seen as a nice incentive also for pulling on new recruits? Is this something that they look at or initially think at, or is it think of, or is it more of a benefit for long tenure with our fire department, encouraging tenure there?
We were asked that in the committee meeting as well, and I think that honestly, it depends on the recruits, the age of the recruits. If you hire 18-year-olds, they're not really projecting out to look at retirement. But if you hire 30-year-olds or older, then it is a recruitment tool and is a retention tool more than a recruitment tool.
That makes great sense. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to direct this to the fire chief also. Would you just, you shared with us the average age or tenure of our fire department members. Could you share that with the committee so they have an idea as to what we have for ranges as far as participation on the fire force, fire department?
Certainly. Our average years of service right now, as of today, are just under nine years, and our average age is 39 years old on the department.
That being shared, I think it's important that we want to try to encourage to keep our experience. Nine years is a good experience. We would want more, I would guess, but it's good that we have that, and I think it's important, the need for employees and workers of all trades is being competitive, and I think we have to try to show appreciation to our firefighters and try to keep them on board. So that's kind of how I looked at it when I went to the suggestion of the $5,000 as an incentive to stay on board with us. Thank you.
Additional discussion. In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, then motion carries. Councilmember Mesky.
Our next item was the, this time it truly is the last of our personnel policy updates. We'll call this one the miscellaneous policies that didn't have anywhere else to go. There are, if you go through the packets, many of them, there's, again, corrections as they are making it more in line with the League of Minnesota City's language. The, I would direct you to page 208, the gifts piece. That was one of our bigger discussion items. That's more reflective of state statute at this time, and so that was clarified, and more clarifications were made in that one. You have to remind me again, HR Director Beckman, the green is new language. We have, I can, I know the red strikeout pieces are, maybe we can just define them, because all the color did come through in this copy.
Yes, the black is the league recommended language. Green is what we have in our existing policy, and then the strike through or the markup version is obviously anything we edited.
And so as you go through the one deferred comp was explained, and with Ms. Beckman there, maybe you could just kind of point out any highlights that I've missed thus far, but kind of continue us through the, I mean, we're moving from donation acceptance policies. A lot of these, we're just changing terminology of position. Maybe we can kind of go from like page 213 as the credit card policy.
What's the typed red? We said the strikeout, I understand, but the typed red and the typed green, what's the difference?
That's honestly just depending on the day I edited it. It made it a different color.
Just a dust of colors?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there wasn't any major changes, but these were policies we had officially on the books. The intent is to only include the section that says financial policies, where it tells you you can access the donation acceptance policy, public purchase expenditures, credit card use, et cetera, on the W drive, and then everything after that isn't intended to be in the handbook because it doesn't apply to the majority of our employees. It's something a select few would need to access. So those will just be available on the W drive that all employees have access to rather than included word for word in the handbook.
And it is presented in here on, starting page 216. We'll highlight that they have the coverage rights under COBRA. That is not really part of the handbook, but that would be given to employees under certain circumstances.
Yep, it needs to be distributed to employees upon hire, if they change from full-time to part-time, or vice versa, and when their employment ends with us. It needs to be distributed at all of those times through the employment cycle.
So we reviewed that, and then there are discontinued policies. We have some here that we probably should not. We had a mandatory retirement age that we took out. There's a few more, if you want to highlight any of them, but I think most of them are fairly self-explanatory.
Yep, that's starting with the 2.15 retirement. That will be removing a mandatory retirement age from our policy. The religious services policy, it's addressed in our paid time off and unpaid leave section. It's really not necessary to have its own section. We did technically have a parking policy on the books that was blank, so we'll be removing that. And then the next two continuation of coverage sections are covered by that COBRA notice that we just discussed. There's no need to include them in full in the handbook since they're distributed during those times of the employee lifecycle. And the very last one being discontinued is 6.2 employee right to know, and that is referenced in our safety manual, which all employees receive a copy of as well. So there is no need to duplicate that.
And the committee did review these, and we did so over a couple of weeks, and so there's, I would move that we approve the miscellaneous personnel policy updates.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve miscellaneous policy updates as noted. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
We've been giving a lot of accolades for people that do wonderful jobs for us, and HR Director Beckman has done a wonderful job as far as this is concerned. The meticulousness, if that's a word, that she uses is incredible, and I think this has been a great improvement to this policy manual, and I think it will be actually felt for actually many years to come. And so I want to personally thank her. I know that we're going to now begin a process of trying to make that document online. I know I've mentioned before with links to state law and such, that employees can go find even more information on those things if they have those questions, and so I just want to use that opportunity to give her a personal shout out because this has been a monumental task, and she's done it very well. So thank you.
Motion on the table and then seconded. Discussion. In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, then motion carries. Councilmember Mesky.
The next item was the 2020 part-time employee pay scales, and I will defer that introduction to HR Director Beckman, if I may.
All right. The most significant update for the part-time pay scale was just the increase in minimum wage. Minnesota minimum wage is going up to $10 an hour starting on January 1st, so that's the majority of the changes in the scale. We also did include two new position scales, one for intern and laser fish assistants, those just being at step one because ideally that employee would not be here longer than a step one, and giving a range so we have some flexibility for what pay rate we would hire the interns at. And then we also added coaches. That was something that had caused some confusion over the last season on where they should be on the scale, so we're just adding their completely own range to remove that confusion. We also added the arena staff title under the parps and rec scale, just because we do have some staff who fall under that description. They only work in the arena, prepping for ice pulling nets, cleaning the facility nights and weekends, assisting with snow removal, all of those kind of things. We also did increase the adult recreation official pay range to the hockey and soccer pay range, mostly to stay competitive with the market. It's getting very difficult to find officials, and they can make those rates with associations and traveling teams, so we need to stay competitive, and we literally cannot have leagues unless we have officials. So we need to, it is very important that we have those officials.
We've had, we had a lot of discussion on those items, and the committee will move the approval of the part-time scale employee, the part-time employee pay scales for 2020. They move its approval.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the 2020 part-time pay schedule. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
So what is the coach?
Coaches for, it's mostly, I believe, our youth leagues, coaching softball, football, those sports.
Aren't they volunteers?
Not all of them. Thank you.
Some of this with the coaches, if the high school coach wants to put on a camp, and they don't want to be contracted out through a 1099, and they want to get paid per hour, this is how the rate will fall for them. So if they put on like a youth wrestling clinic, and they only want to get, they don't want to collect like what the other coaches do, we have a category for them now where they would fall into being paid per hour.
Don't they put on the clinics themselves? You guys just do the registration?
Yes, to a point where if they do have, some of them would want to get paid if they did a, let's say, the youth football camp, John Coldwell does get paid to do that camp. He opts to do the 1099 range where he's a contracted employee, but there will be some that will put on a real small, like our footsaw soccer, where he'll just get paid a per hour, and then we collect, we keep all the fees, we just pay him the per hour.
Okay. Additional discussion. In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was opposed, then motion carries. Councilmember Mesky.
The next item is the 2020 citywide base pay schedule, and for that one, I'm going to turn that over to the City Minister Grammets.
Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers, part of the plan of the city council was to consolidate, make more concise, and create a sound base for future decisions to be made on compensation. I think the city council has made some strides in working towards that endeavor, but one of the things that have been noticed is that we have not had a citywide pay scale since 2010, and normally we would do something like that on an annual basis, review and approve by the city council. And we had a partial pay schedule done in 2016, but as we all know, a partial is not a full. And so what basically we are proposing tonight is to have the city council adopt the 2020 base pay schedule, and as future contract negotiations come up, we'll be utilizing this as the main pay schedule. So as we talk with the other labor unions, right now, we might have a level eight position, So we're going to try and put everybody on this master list. So we're going to coordinate all wage scales onto this list. So this is the base, and it has to be done before we can do the next step in the process of, of bringing all the different pay scales and, and, uh, levels onto one document. So this is the first step that we have to get past, and then it might be, you know, one or two years as we go through negotiations to bring everybody in line with these numbers. And so that's the plan. Uh, but this has to happen first, because everything that happens in the future is built off of this. That way, we should not have in the future, uh, confusion over, uh, pay grade eight in the general, uh, bargaining unit is a pay grade 11 in AFSMI, and it's a seven in the non-union. Okay? This creates the, the grid, and then in the future, we'll be aligning everybody else to this grid. That's the plan.
This was a very difficult conversation, but it has to start somewhere. We've been, it's been the goal all along to obviously bring everybody on to a common, um, schedule. You have to create the schedule, and so it's going to apply right away, my understanding, to the non-union employees, but the ultimate goal with debris to bring all of the union employees onto this as well. And right now, I mean, we, that, if you wanted to see that all happen at the same time, it's just an impossible task to do that. Uh, there's probably going to have to be reclassifications and all these other things that we have to do as far as grading is concerned. You won't change anybody's jobs, but the base salary thing has to be established. And so what this is doing, it is establishing that base schedule. Without this, this is the first step. Without this, we can't do any of the other ideas of bringing alignment. So, um, the committee was in favor of this as well, and so, um, I would make the motion to reapprove the bated 2020 base pay, pay schedule for the city of Wilmer.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the base pay schedule. The city of Wilmer. Discussion. Councilmember, uh, Alvarado.
With this pay scale, um, it's, it's got nice lines, and everything is real square and, and, and lined up, you know, but you can anticipate that there's going to be some gray, and there's going to be some massaging to this, and, and it isn't going to just fall square pegs into square holes, I don't believe. I think there's going to be some adjustments. So just, I'm just asking the council to understand that just because we've got this first step, doesn't mean that everything is just going to line up like dominoes. There's going to be a little, a little work involved, and so be prepared to be understanding of that process. Is that fair enough?
Well, that's more than fair, because that first domino will be actually, we're going to talk about it in about five minutes, so, yes, or maybe less.
Additional discussion. In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries. Councilmember Mesky.
Well, but like I said, well, I guess it was a lot less than five minutes. After we had the offer of readjusting health insurance rates for our employees for the percent increases of salary, um, that does create an immediate problem with the pay scale we just approved, in that we will be over the maximum for a handful of those folks. Um, and therefore, we have to have a motion to allow them to exceed their pay scale maximums in order to receive the negotiated 10% increase due to the health insurance change. Um, and so, thank you for the insightful comments, Councilmember Alvarado, because it happens almost right away. Uh, and so we did have a great discussion on this one as well. That is what we negotiated, and so I would make a motion to adopt a resolution allowing non-union employees and supervisors to exceed their pay scale maximum in order to receive the 10% increase due to health insurance changes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to allow employees to exceed pay scale maximums. Discussion. In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries. Councilmember Mesky.
The last item that we had, uh, we went into an executive session to discuss labor negotiation strategy. We did send out, uh, the committee was not comfortable making a motion to bring before you this evening with that information without the entire council present. So your, uh, item number 18 on the agenda this evening is to address that in executive session as well. And so with that being the last piece that came forward, there was no other, um, items to come before the Labor Committee at this, that evening, so with that, I'd move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made second to file the minutes. Discussion. In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have a resolution to enter into purchase agreement for Swanson Field Light Project. Rob, or Mr. Almarder.
Mayor, member of the councils, I apologize for the compressed timeframe on this, it's just how the timeframe worked, um, but I wanted to get this in front of the councils for the potential savings. Tonight would be to recommend a, an adopter of a resolution to enter a purchase agreement with Musco Lighting for the Swanson Field Project. Um, to make you aware, this is a CIP project for 2020. Um, it's tied to the investment Wilmer project as well as what's at Swanson Fields. Um, basically, the lighting system at the Swanson complex is totally outdated and will need to be upgraded. Um, the new lighting system for either blue or orange will improve the safety and the quality of play. With the council's agreement, we'd be able to lock in the 2019 prices for what we have for the Musco Lighting, which would be $200,013 and $315. And the structural and engine, electrical insulation would be between $90,000 to $100,000. And this all fits in the, um, the scope of the budget. If we locked it in for right now, we would have a potential savings of $6,000 to get into this agreement. We wouldn't have to pay anything until 2020, 30 days after delivery. Um, we've used the Musco Lighting before. We have it at Baker Field. These lights would be identical to what's at Baker, and we've also used them at Miller Park at the tennis courts as well.
I'll make the motion to purchase them.
Second.
Motion made seconded to purchase the, enter into purchase agreement for Swanson Field Lights. Councilmember Nelson.
Um, I wish to speak against this. I was very surprised to see this. After sitting and listening to the presentations from the architects and, and people talking about a master plan, and looking, and also being aware of the conversations that are going on regarding Swanson Field, and the uncertainty of whether these lights will be on orange, or whether they will be on blue, and the different sizes of them, um, I'm really questioning why we would do this. It almost feels like what we were, we did with playground equipment, and that there's a sale, let's buy it, when we don't even know for sure what the parameters of the lighting would be. And I'm, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with it, um, just listening to the uncertainty with, with that, and, um, I guess, why this isn't being bid, I understand that it, um, it falls into a state contract. It didn't go before Public Works, it didn't go before Finance, and I'm not even sure that there's total support in the question that I asked with, with doing this with the, um, Swanson Field Group that has been meeting. And so I'm confused with why we are trying to do this, and why we would not wait, and the, the architects were very specific about having a master plan with what you're going to do with all of the fields. And whether it's orange, or whether it's blue, um, I just, for six or eight, $8,000 to buy something that we don't even know for sure that this is, the design is going to be, um, I have to vote against this. Um, I, I don't see that this is the right time to do this, and I think, um, once we go through the process, we can, we can come back and look at what we really need for lights, and when we're going to need it, and instead of committing ourselves to this right now.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two questions for you. The first, uh, well, I'll ask my second one first. Um, when you get a bid for these, um, projects, um, what is, how long is the bid good for?
This will be for the year.
Okay, so like if you were to receive a new bid in 2020, it would be good until 2021?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, second question then, um, would these lights be going in prior to any work done with the lost, sorry, the local option sales tax projects out at Swanson Field? Will we be installing anything prior to any other work that would be done?
It's kind of goes with what, uh, Councilmember Nelson said, it would be part of the plan. So it would, actually, I think it would help give the investment Wilmer Group guidance that, yes, the lights are going to be funded, they're going to be placed out at Swanson, either on orange field or on blue. Um, we just know that lights are going to have to be on one of those two fields. It gives them some guidance that, yes, the lights will be placed out there, and then they can do it as far as the plan about how they want things to be done out there.
The, the other thing.
Councilmember Nelson, sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor Calvin. You spoke to us at the Public Works, um, meeting regarding the lights, and you made a statement, um, that if perhaps we wouldn't need to replace all the lighting at orange, and, um, which triggered a conversation with, this has been in the works for a long time, you know, why just straightening the poles and fixing the lights would be good enough, kind of conversation, um, with that. But you also made the, the comment that you had checked with, I think it was this vendor, and that it was inconclusive with whether the orange lights would need to be replaced or not. And I'm certainly not suggesting that with all of the improvements that the local option sales tax is doing, that we would not replace the lights, but I do think it brings a question to if they decide to go with moving that state, moving it to blue, what will we need to do to orange? And so I, I just, I find it really interesting. It, it feels like a sales pitch to me from the, from the company, and, um, I think it would be, um, concerning for us to make that commitment at this time, so.
Councilmember Mesky.
How much did we, I mean, we put this in the, from the undesignated funds, and this will be budgeted for this project, how much money did we put in that?
320, I think.
315, I think.
315.
315, I mean, the question I have is, the comment in the middle of paragraph of my history on this, if there's a three to four percent increase in the price of this, and the price tags we already got, that's going to put us potentially over budget already in 2020, where I can't pay for this, is that correct?
It's going to be very tight, because when they gave us the quote, they said between 300 and 315, or the quote.
Because, I mean, I gotta do some quick math here, I think, yeah, I'd say we're beyond tight, or?
Well, we're extremely tight with it.
All right. And I don't know anything about lighting on a, on a field. I appreciate it when I'm at the game, but, um, is the, is there going to be differences, substantial differences between whether I put it on the orange field or the blue field? Have people had that conversation, or the price tags?
We're still talking about it. We should know in the next two weeks.
Okay.
Councilmember Nelson.
Um, one of the conversations that took place, both with the architect proposals and some of the others, is the orange, the orange field is much larger than it needs to be right now, and so chances are that whatever improvements are, if it stays at orange, the field will be smaller, and if it goes to blue, it will be a different size also. And so that's just part of my concern, there's a lot of unknowns with what's going to happen, and how the design's going to be, and respecting the architects. I realize this is not, um, this is city money, it's not local option sales tax money, but I think it certainly fits into part of the planning that's being done by that group through the local option sales tax. And so just out of respect to that, I, I realize, you know, prices are prices, but, um, I, I just have a concern that we are, are, it's like building a house and buying things before you've even made the decisions of how you're going to build it, so.
Well, I just, my, my concern is we put a price tag on it, and we haven't even got to 2020, and my price tag is already wrong. It's already behind, and that, that's a little disconcerting for me.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No matter what you do, you have to buy lights, either on orange or blue. Orange, we're planning on moving the dugouts closer to the foul line, or baselines, and moving the backstop closer to home base, so it'll be similar to Baker. So the lights on the sides, they have to be replaced. Out in the outfield, they're fine. The discussion on blue, some want to move home base to the northwest, and then enlarge the fence and take down trees, and I'm against that. I would prefer just to fix orange. So no matter what you do, you have to buy the lights. And we got a plan for orange, it's just, if there's enough votes there, not change it for blue.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Al, maybe this is a simple question, but how many light poles do we need for one field versus the other field? Are there going to be the same amount of light poles? Are there, what's the difference?
For like a field like orange, that'll take six light poles. So four around the backstop area, and then two in the outfield. So for a field that size, that's typically what it'll take is six light poles. None of them can be shared, so they're all going to be all individual poles.
Okay. And then blue is going to have the same amount of poles?
That's, that's going to be a question that's still with the investment Wilmer Committee. But where the, where, where do the lights actually go?
I understand we need lights. I understand that. Uh, that's been a discussion that we've had, day in and day out. It just seems a little, um, nebulous right now that we don't really have a, a concrete, um, idea as to what we're going to need, and we're just giving, throwing money at it. I, I think it might be a little premature, until we get something a little more concrete. That's what I'm, I'm feeling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, to speak to both points, I'm, I'm still on the fence. Oh, do you like that one? Um, I'm still on the fence about this one, because, um, I do agree that the plan has not been solidified by the appropriate boards and commissions. However, um, I know for a fact that anything regarding recreational sports, athletics, whatnot, um, if, if this is all that it goes up next year, I will be very, very surprised, because we're probably looking at double-digit percentage increases on everything, from artificial turf, to backstops, to fencing, to everything like that, because there, uh, all across America have been referendums and local option sales taxes, and all these votes that took place this last election cycle. Everybody is doing their recreational facility planning now, and they are planning on putting their bids out for tender. All the manufacturers know that, they're stocking up, and they are jacking up their prices, and that's something that's just an unsaid thing. So while I do agree that, um, that I'm not as comfortable as what I would like to be with, with how far out the prospective plan is, or how detailed that plan is going to be, I'm also cognizant of the fact that things are going to be going up in price. And so if there, if we have the opportunity to lock in pricing, when applicable, uh, we should try to take advantage of that if we can. Having said that, like I said, we got a way, uh, one versus the other, and I'm still a little bit undecided. Rob, changed my mind.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson, followed by Mesky.
Uh, when Councilmember Palmer was speaking, it, it reminded me of something that was also said during the architect proposals, and when they were, they were asking questions about when these fields could be worked on. And the nice part about this is that, um, I think the baseball, um, group has worked hard that this field can be worked on, um, not in prime time, or not in prime season, which also, the statement was made, allows for bidding to be done at not prime time, and with that, and with the fact that we have a construction manager, and we're looking at an architect, um, with that, I just am really questioning, um, our going ahead with this without having the input of the, the people that we've hired.
Councilmember Osmus, and again, looking for new information.
Thank you. Um, let me see if I can make it new. Um, basically, we have budgeted for $315,000 for the lights, we knew that. Um, we're looking at saving money, because we already know that's going to be tight. And again, whether it is blue or orange, we're need, we need to buy these lights. And I appreciate, I can appreciate, um, trying And I appreciate, I can appreciate trying to save that six to $8,000 to make that happen because every penny's going to count on these projects. I, I think it's a timing thing and it isn't so much that we're being rushed, it just is the timing and the costs that are going to go up and to take advantage of that, we need to move now.
Councilmember Mesky, again, new information.
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what you just said because that's exactly what I was thinking. You, you, maybe I'll just state that frankly, is you got $315,000 for lights. And so, how you're going to spend that, I frankly don't care, that's the price tag for lights. We had, we had this conversation, we were doing budgeting and I really, every time we seem to do a project, I, I appreciate Councilmember Palmer talking about these prices going up because that tells me now, I'm much more comfortable saying, you know what, you have $315,000, you need to spend that as wisely as you can because that's what we have. Because I can already see how this is going to work out, that we're not going to have you at 315, we're going to have change orders and more money's going to be needed for these things. I say, you, you got $315,000, you better best spend that to make this lighting work and if you have to wait for a few of these things to come in, you're going to have $315,000. I don't want to go on the record saying I'm going to only approve $315,000 in the future, but I really feel that way right now is that, that was the budgeted price and that's what we have and if you can get a discount on making those go farther, the sooner the better. But I do appreciate the fact, if we have a plan, it hasn't happened, let's make it happen. I don't know if that was new or not, but that's what I have.
I couldn't stop you. This is a discussion. Motion's been made and seconded to enter into a purchase agreement for Swanson Field Light Project. This is a roll call. Is a resolution, calls for a roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes, aye. Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
No.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
The resolution passes. Next we have, where do you go? Thank you for your work, appreciate that. Next we have consideration of on-sale club, on-sale 2019 liquor license renewals. Ms. Thompson, our city clerk.
Mayor, members of the council, before you's a request to approve the on-sale and club on-sale 2020 Sunday liquor license renewals pending police department approval. For 2019, the city council approved Sunday liquor applications for eight on-sale and two club on-sale establishments and for 2020, we have seven on-sale and two club on-sale establishments that are requesting renewal of their current Sunday liquor licenses for 2020. Staff's recommendation to approve the said request.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the on-sale and club on-sale liquor licenses for 2019. Discussion. Roll call. I'm sorry, Councilmember Fagerly.
Clerk Thompson, is this all of the people that need license then in the city or is there some?
This is all for the Sunday that have made application for the Sunday approval. We have one, you know, like I mentioned, in 2019, we had eight on-sale and we only have seven this year. That is our next agenda item. That's, that is our number eight.
All right, thank you.
This is a discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next we have consideration of on-sale Sunday liquor license for Womer Community Golf Club. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you's a request to approve the Womer Community Golf Club Incorporated on-sale intoxicating liquor license through the fiscal year ending April 25, 2020 and the Sunday liquor license ending December 31, 2020. Restaurant located at 1026th Avenue Northeast will be under new ownership in January of 2020. The new owners request to hold an on-sale intoxicating liquor license and Sunday liquor license under the name Womer Community Golf Club Incorporated, doing business as Eagle Creek Golf Club. It's staff's recommendation to approve the request.
Move to approve. Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Womer Community Golf Club Incorporated. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution, that motion passes as well. Next we have council member announcements, I'll start with Councilmember Alvarado.
Okay. Go out and celebrate the lights, enjoy them. Keep in mind, there's a basketball tournament usually during the winter break, plan on attending those if you can. I understand the school's going to be out for a full two weeks, so watch out for kids playing on the big hills and enjoy the holidays. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
This morning, I met with NPR radio and gave a little interview about the Glacial Ridge Curling Club along with Kevin Madsen and Tom Amberg. Just giving them an update, they were talking about the financial impact that the curling club could have on the Womer community, where they were at in their fundraising at this point. I'm trying to think of what else we told them about. Look, Kevin Madsen, of course, had some history on where it's been and where they, where they're at, but it was a good discussion and I'm not sure when it's going to air or how they're going to do it, but look forward to listening to that. Happy holidays.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, it's kind of hard to believe actually, looking back, we're, it's already the last meeting of the year and I think we all should just challenge ourselves to reflect a little bit as best we can where we were almost a year ago at this point. And you never can predict exactly where you're going to land at the very end, but you can kind of try your best to set targets. And I think in, in, in many areas, we made some great progress on a lot of things and we've got a lot accomplished, there's a lot that have been cleaned up. We have more things going now than, than I can remember in, in any of the recent past and Womer really has a lot going on and that's to the thanks of city staff, the council and each of the respective committees and commissions and whatnot. And just remember that, heading into the new year, set our sights high, raise the bar and thanks everybody for their hard work.
Councilmember Nelson.
I will pass, thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Hopefully, everyone can get out to Robins Island and take that drive through the trail and the park there, it's gorgeous and if you can travel around town, there's some good displays and residential areas. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, see you next year.
Councilmember Mesky.
Ditto.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Happy holidays.
Councilmember Davis.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Okay, announcement of council committee meeting dates, Public Works.
We will be meeting this Wednesday at a different time, we will meet 12 noon, Wednesday the 18th.
Okay. Where?
At City Hall, City Hall.
Finance is not meeting this week.
Labor.
Could you ask Rick first?
Community Development.
We are not meeting.
Okay, yes, we have been asked to have a meeting, a brief meeting on the, on December 23rd. The reason I ask is the 5:15 slot is now available, I have talked to this site because I could talk to them. If Councilmember Alvarado can make it, I will recommend that the time be at 5:15. I'm getting a thumbs up, so if, if we would make a change to our normal time, it's normally 6:15, but we are looking at December 23rd, 5:15, a brief meeting to deal with one issue that is of a time essence and importance. So, a brief meeting in the City Hall, December 23rd, 5:15.
We are now going to go into executive session.
December 30th, I need to talk about.
Oh, Mr. Gramm.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, you've had three hours to think about whether or not you want to meet on December 30th for a mini-retreat. What direction do you wish to count the, the staff to prepare?
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a comment, I think, I don't know if people want to meet on December 30th, but I would request there's an awful lot going on, that we get updates on the local option sales tax projects and also the City Hall Task Force. The minutes that are in our packet today are from August and I think it would be helpful to have an update on the current things that are happening there. I've heard some price tags being shared by council members and I think it would be good for us to update the community on what some of the plans are and some of those kinds of things. So, I would request whether it's December 30th or not, but that we have some sort of session to receive updates on projects.
This is a discussion.
Was there any other things that we had picked for this fifth session, this fifth Monday, that we thought we needed to talk about? Is there anything in the, in the, in the garage?
I am not aware of anything specific, but I know when I was discussing this with the mayor, I think he listed five, six different things for updates. You know, as was mentioned, City Hall Task Force, the local option sales tax, what's happening, you know, with the architects and the construction managers and that whole process. So, there's plenty of things to sit down and talk about if you, if you want to talk about it, it's just, you know, that's just kind of in the, in between Christmas and, and New Year's and I know everybody's kind of busy during those time periods, but if you, if you wish to meet, there's plenty of things we can, we can discuss.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I was going to ask the mayor, what, what are your thoughts?
It's a council decision. What does the council wish to do? Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe we could find out if, if people are even, or if there's people that know they're going to be gone. I for one know that I'm going to be away.
I'm here.
No.
To, to cut to the chase, we don't belabor this any longer, I would entertain a motion to have a mini-retreat, the agenda to be prepared by the city administrator after consulting with staff.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded, a discussion. In favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed? That motion does carry. Next, we'll go into closed session at the start of the meeting. The next agenda item is labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota statute, section 13D, point 03, sub 1, clause B. Portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to such statute upon duly approved motion of the city council. I will now enter a motion to close this portion of the meeting. It's moved. Motion has been made and seconded to close the meeting at 10:10 PM on December 16th.